Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Trustees meeting for the Town of Buena Vista. The date is May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is seven oh eight P. M. Please silence your cell phones if you have them. And, Oliver, would you please follow the roll?
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Justice Hilton Kinga.
Here.
Justice Jenkins.
Here.
Justice LaCretzi.
Here.
Justice Rowe.
Here.
The trustees switcher.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the plugging of the agenda. My plugging of the agenda is to declare how the United States of America, a unified republic where we expand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The trustees have before them a proposed agenda. Are there any changes to be made in the agenda?
Mayor, I do want us to consider reversing the order of the two executive session topics, just so that we can have staff rather than waiting around for a topic they can move back to that first topic.
Okay, right. Does anyone have any other changes? Or would someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Row and Cobb. Thank you. Oliver. Anyone opposed? So now we have the consent agenda. This includes minutes of some committee meetings, the fire chief report, public works director report, and ordinance about licenses, renewal of a couple licenses for the Ascend marijuana stores, and the rodeo grounds accepting a portion of land has been owned by the county and is proposed to be transferred to the town. Does anybody have any changes or questions?
Question.
Yes?
For businesses in the future that don't have to get a sales tax license, does that mean we don't get any sales tax from those businesses? Do they still have to charge sales tax if they don't have a business license?
Lisa, that may be a question for you and Treasury. I think if they're doing business in the town, we get sales tax.
Right.
From them.
Right. So I think it's two separate things, but I would have to check on that.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. It's Philip. Hey. Yeah, those two things are totally independent of each other, so they would still need to remit sales tax through the state. So, yeah, no change on our sales tax side.
Okay. Thank you.
I think so the budget change is really in the licensing fees. Is that right, Philip?
Yeah, that's true. There is a slight change on the budget for the licensing fees.
Thank you. Anybody else have items they'd like to discuss in the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. That's LaCretzi and Swisher. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. You're in the public. As you came in, there's a sign up sheet here for public comment. And, let's see. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so people who want to speak may speak now. And Joel, yours is the name on the sign up sheet. If you would please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Joel Benson, P.O. Box six three two zero in Buena Vista. Thank you for the time this evening and allowing the opportunity to speak. I'd just like to mention two things related to Alpine West and the dedication of water subdivision. There's a statement made in the staff report that this is going to require a code change, but I want to point out the existing code, Chapter thirteen dash sixty-two, paragraph A, about a water main extension, which was written specifically for this scenario. The current code language states that the developer must provide proof of availability of acceptable water rights. Water rights acceptable to the town are defined in that section as such water rights, as are determined by the town upon the expert advice of its water rights consultants and in its sole discretion to be sufficient in quantity and seniority to reliably provide the proposed demands of the project. The language already exists in the code and you do not need a code change for that to specifically have water certificates, augmentation certificates. The language was updated a few years ago just for this scenario. If Attorney Parker doesn't feel this paragraph is sufficient, then maybe a modification to this specific section of the code related to water main extensions would be acceptable. The notion they have to write new language specifically to allow acceptance of upper water certificates again is not necessary and is also could create far more complications. One, it doesn't fit with what you guys have dictated so far as water policy for town and also could be interpreted in the future as this board acquiescing to development going through the conservancy district for water instead of town's recognized portfolio. So it's going to complicate things. And one other thing that cautionary with that draft MOU, which is fine, but you know, if you could tie this, that MOU specifically to Alpine West or development outside of town limits, again, avoid confusion, keep it simple. You don't need to create something thinking that water certificates are a viable option because they're an idea, but they're not yet really explored by current folk. So tie it up on West, so. All right. Thank you very much for your time. I'll be around. It's not a public hearing, but I'll be sitting out here listening if you guys have any questions or whatever later.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
I think we have one comment.
Good. Who is that?
Justin.
Justin Kirk. Thank you, Justin. I appreciate your coming to the meeting via Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Fay, and thank you to the trustees of the Board of Buena Vista. I'm Justin Kirk. I'm the field representative for Congresswoman Brittany Pedersen of the Seventh Congressional District, which includes the Chaffey County, of course, but also Lake, Park, Teller, Fremont, Custer, Jefferson, and Brumfield Counties. The six rural counties are where my main focus is. And real quick on a note of just a few details of what the Congresswoman's already been doing at the U.S. House. She's a member of the House Financial Services, or rather, the House Financial Services Committee, of which there are two subcommittees she's on, that's Housing and Insurance, National Security, and Illicit Finance and International Solutions. And mentioned in the earlier working session, there is a community project funding request in that has made it through our office filter basically into the House Appropriations Committee and will be going through that committee's process. We're, of course, championing it along with others in the district to make sure that they get to the end result of the United States budget. I want to touch real quick on the fact that we've opened up earlier in April, the Canyon City Office. So we now have in district two operating offices, one in Lakewood, one in Canyon City. The one in Canyon, I'll be at dedicated Mondays and Wednesdays. However, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, I may be there at the Canyon City Office, but I also maybe and actually are making plans to hold mobile office hours in the other rural counties to include Chaffey, of course. I will have those communicated to you guys long in advance before we do so. But again, but all that said, I'm always happy to meet, whether virtually or in person, if I'm in the area for, you know, some other, some other topic of mine, something that we've already been coordinating with local officials on, although not in Chaffey County, thankfully, yet, but has been with Park and Teller County officials on fires that have already started off there, where the Congresswoman's office can be of assistance. We look to make sure we're stepping in and doing our part. Last part I'll leave you with is this. I'm an employee of the United States House, right? Not the Republicans, not the Democrats. So if you have members of the public who, or yourselves that wish to bring an issue, whether social security, veterans related, whatever U.S. federal agency it's with, I'll serve them as I would anybody, so equally. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate your coming. Okay, no further public comment. So we will go on to staff reports, starting with the Town Administrator, Lisa Parnell Rowe.
Yeah, thank you. I am super excited to insert a picture of something.
Oh, that's cool.
Please put that up on the screen for us, Chase. You know, the PD, the new PD facility has been a huge undertaking, and it's been one that Mr. Pocket and people have been very engaged in. And the fact that we would have our other staff, our police chief, provide them, and you know, reward for that, a plaque for that, recognizing that effort, I think speaks volumes about the team, you know, the team engagement in our staff and our key leaders. And I just think that that was well deserving. So I do want to just recognize not only that, but the fact that our team really lifts each other up. The other thing that I want to highlight is my discussion on the rodeo grounds. I think that we've made some very good strides with the partnership with Tribe View. We had a site visit, two site visits. One was really to look at the master plan and what we want to implement from the get go with the hundred thousand dollars that was built into that agreement. And we talked about the trail, the five K trail, and a permeable surface. And we also talked about parking. And so those are the things that we're looking at. And then we also did a site visit with our revegetation expert through Right Water. And we also had Allison, who it comes, you know, from our in-house public works, who's quite knowledgeable about noxious weeds and all those things that can lend value. So they were both on that site visit and provided expertise that was really valuable. We have staked out a new reference site, and the old reference site, we couldn't even follow the breadcrumbs at this point. So we just decided we were going to survey that, and Tribe View is paying for that. And I think that we made some really great strides on that visit, and I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with them. I think we'll be through the revegetation plan very, very soon and make a bond with our annexation agreement, so. So to give you an update on that. And that's, I have other things in there, but those are the two big things for me. Yes.
Lisa, just one question. How soon do you pin down kind of what Tribe View will actually pay for? Because there are a couple of potentials and probabilities in there.
So the costs that are built into that is the hundred K, and they're also paying for a part-time public works maintenance, part maintenance position in the long term with that, with that in annexation agreement. Is there anything I'm forgetting with that?
I would just clarify that the point at which they are legally committed to do those things would be during the annexation process.
I see.
Which they're pursuing and are highly motivated to complete. So that's a legal document that would tie them to that.
Okay. And so you'll get to see that soon.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, other questions from Lisa? Hey, thank you, Lisa. Now we're going to go to the police chief for his report as well as probably moving on to our first business item, but let's do the staff report if you would please. Chief?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Sure, I'm going to read through it. I'll just touch on a couple of things. Hiring is always an issue. We get two people that we make job offers to, and they're really good individuals. They're not post-certified, so they'll have to go through an academy, and the next one doesn't start till August. So we will be down a couple of people over the summer, which makes things tough. But our other guy that was in the academy, he passed the post exam yesterday. He's really excited, so he'll be on the road with us next Wednesday. So that'll help us out a bit. And also, one of the nice things about the school resource officer position is they're not in the school over the summer, so we get that as an extra body on the road. So we'll keep our heads above water. Let's see, we did a team meeting a couple of weeks ago. I gave a couple of letters of commendations to Commander Garcia, Sergeant Adair, and Officer McDonald. They had a high-risk call that they handled really well, so I wanted to recognize that. I think we've talked about this before, but I got to participate with the mayor at the civic speed. That was a lot of fun, really smart kids, and I was happy to be asked to be a judge on that. We did our every fifteen minutes program on April twenty-fourth. The video for that is on YouTube. If you have any questions, ask me about it, but it's a drinking and driving program to educate teams about the dangers of that, and it's focused around prom and graduation season. Bike to School Day, big shout out to the direct department. They organized that really well, and that was a lot of fun. Kids and parents out there on their bikes. We got some of the video footage of it on our Facebook page, if you want to check it out. Also, that day was Administrative Assistant Day. I just want to give a shout out to Judy Myberg, who's been with the Police Department for eighteen years, and Melissa Goodwin, they're administrative assistants, and they do a great job. Just some notes in there about fitness and some of our goals there and how a lot of our team members have been working really hard to get in better shape, which is important. The armored vehicle that the board approved is now in the county, and the tactical team has started training with it. There's a picture of it attached, and then there's a couple of pictures of our Canine Thor. He's doing good, Frasier, our Canine Officer's been doing a lot of training with him. He's getting a bath in one of those pictures, and he got his name on the side of the car, which he's pretty happy about. And the new PD has, when you're able to do a tour, it's got some space that's just for him, like a dog run and a kennel inside, so he won't have to be in the car all the time. So that'll be really nice. That's all I have. Thank you.
I thought your, the every fifteen minutes video is extremely moving. I hope that the kids find it as, you know, as moving as I did. It's just amazing.
Thank you.
Very well done. Any questions for the chief? Thank you. So now we'll move to our first business item of the night, which is to decide whether we are ready to pass ordinance number eleven, series two thousand and twenty-three, entitled An Ordinance of the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, adding a new section ten dash two fifty-eight to the Buena Vista Municipal Code concerning the possession of tobacco products by persons under eighteen years of age. Does this go to the chief, Lisa, or you know?
Yeah, I'll have chief weigh in on this.
And Lisa Skanga, our prosecutor.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think I'm mostly here to answer questions, and Ms. Skanga, also to answer any questions the board might have. I think the understanding of the ordinance and how it works and the reasoning behind it is understood. And as I understand it, there are some questions about what the penalties might look like, and I think Ms. Skanga could speak to that. And I also made some comments as an addendum to the packet that it looks like it's up there.
Good. Would you like to speak?
I'm happy to address questions. I think that's the main reason why I was asked to come in. Some questions were brought up at the last discussion about the ordinance and just concerns about how it would go through the municipal court and what that really is going to look like. So I can tell you that or take questions, however, whatever everyone's comfortable with. Anybody have a question?
So would you like to ask the questions?
Oh, no.
I did have some questions last time, as I think I'm a little bit aware of, and I saw the chief's addendum, and I feel better having seen that and understanding better. But my concern really was just that, although I don't want kids to start smoking, you know, or never want to prevent that, discourage that, I also don't want them to be shamed or worse, have something on their record that could deny them an opportunity. And I link that also to what is pretty well documented, that tobacco marketing targeted low-income kids and families, kids and families of colors, LGBTQ, kids that in some cases can already be marginalized, and I'd hate to see that become worse for them or deny them an opportunity for a scholarship or, you know, getting into trade school or college. So that was where I was coming from. And I am curious, though, I would love to hear you explain kind of how it does move through court typically, but also, what I was trying to get away from is that something likely won't happen, like these penalties likely won't be great, but I don't know what the latitude is for someone to apply a harsh penalty.
So, so the way the process would work is that at school, the school is going to take the first bite at trying to get kids to stop a, or whatever they're doing that brought them to the school's attention. So they're going to, they're going to first do that. And I think they were, they were here last meeting to kind of address what they do. When that doesn't solve the problem, then the police department will issue a citation for the juvenile and their parent to come to court. When they come to court, you know, the judge will tell the juvenile what the charge is, tell the juvenile and the parent, of course, what the possible penalties are. And for this one, the possible penalties are that fine, there's the possibility of some jail, but that's never likely with a juvenile, because for a lot of reasons. First of all, it's municipal court. We're not really, we're not really in the court for jail. We're just not. That's not our purpose in municipal court. Now, we have that as a tool, should it ever become necessary, but that's really not what municipal court is for. So although it's there, it's not. And for juveniles, that would mean going to a juvenile detention facility, which is really not likely for us in municipal or just any juvenile to that. If it gets to a point where a juvenile needs detention, that ticket is going to go to county court. I really think, I mean, I may be speaking out of turn, but I'm going to, if I see one of those where I think, you know, the kid has gotten to the point in their life where detention is the option, I'm probably going to call the chief and say, probably want to move this ticket out of municipal court and put it in county court.
Could that happen for smoking or vaping?
It is, there is a statute for vaping on the state books, so it could, but I don't think that's happening very often. County court's pretty busy. So again, it's, it's a, when it's called for, when it really gets to a point where, and that's going to be tied to other charges, that's not really going to be something that we're going to see. So, so although it's there, it's not, it's not likely at all. And what we, what we do when the juveniles come in is talk to the kid and the parent, if they're willing to, nobody has to talk to me. That's their choice. But most, most parents choose to, and the kids usually choose to. And it's just a chance for me to kind of get an idea from the parent and the kiddo, you know, where are you at? What's going on? Why, why are you here on this ticket after school's already talked to you about vaping or whatever the issue was? And learning more about why the child is there, and I will have heard already from the school resource officer about what they know as far as background and what's happening. So typically, I'm going to know if it is someone that is in one of those circumstances that you're describing, and if kiddo's got a lot of other things going on contributing to this issue. And it's knowing that background that then helps me know what to do with a particular ticket. And I think with these vaping tickets, the main option is going to be if the kid has some other things going on, you know, a lot of times there'll be trouble, you know, showing up to school, that kind of thing, those other things going on. I can choose to refer them to restorative justice, which will work around multiple issues, and they do it in sort of a confidential way, where they don't have to tell me, so the kid does not have to talk to me about what may be happening, and that helps kids open up, so they can go to restorative justice. If it's just a little rebellion thing and it's not, you know, and the parents tell me a little bit about it and it's not, you know, there's not a whole bunch of other issues surrounding that, then I probably will just have them do, there is that online course that we, that Chief Morgan put in there that I found that's through the state, and they can do that online, they get a certificate, they show me that they've completed it by sending me that certificate, and then I would dismiss the case because it's really about education. It's really about education and not continuing the behavior. So that's, it's just one more, one more attempt to get their attention. You know, the school did it and sort of handled it the same way, but now they're stepping it up a little bit. Now they've appeared in front of a judge, they've had to talk to a lawyer, step it up just a little bit with that. And then if that doesn't work, then of course we would look at, now we're talking about a conviction and a fine. And that's really where it, that's really where it would go. Does that help explain throughout the process?
It does. A conviction or a fine, what was the, I think we may have talked about this last time, but what would the maximum fine be there, do you know?
I believe the way it was written, tell me if I'm wrong, chief, but I think it was the up to the twenty-six fifty, the municipal amount, wasn't it?
I don't recall. It's not covered by the end of statute, so.
Yeah, that's, that's right. It's just subject to the general penalty provision. Sorry to jump in, just trying to save some time.
Yeah, so, I mean, I hear what you say, and I trust you all to do that, but you may not always be this optimistic in these roles. And I think Judge Green, I have no reason not to trust him also, but it just seems like the potential is there for these kids to really get hit hard financially or in something that would damage their ability to succeed in some other way. So concerns me in this.
So I would, I would say that, no, it may not be the same face in the position, however, it's a pretty typical stance on how cases are handled. It's not a real, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not much of an anomaly in that. I think that you won't, that's a, that's a pretty, pretty straightforward across the board way that juveniles are handled throughout our system. And so at many levels, but at municipal for sure. And so I don't think, I don't think you would have a lot of concerns about it being handled significantly different by coming through. But what you don't want to do is you don't want to make a cookie cutter for every child.
Sure.
Because you don't know the child is coming. For some kids, you know, you made the penalty X for everyone. You took that away, all that discretion away by learning about a particular problem, you stop addressing the problem.
Okay.
So, because I know that was one thing that was talked about, was maybe we should have some real standard things for first offense, this is what happens, second offense, this is what happens. And it sounds good here, sitting here and looking at it on paper, but none of those really work very well in the court.
I think we were talking more like a maximum, a lower maximum fine or some other penalty. Do you oppose that as well?
I just don't think it ever is a benefit to get too specific on this type of ordinance.
Okay.
There are some ordinances where it may. There, there are some ordinances where it may be appropriate, but for something that's like this, it, you, part of it is you need consistency in order for everyone to stay on the same page. And so keeping it as the general penalty keeps us all on the same page. We all know what's sitting out there. And there's less chance that we, we get that wrong when we're advising people of the penalties. And so it, it's nice to keep it simple for that reason too. And I, I don't want to dumb it down too much, but I do want to dumb it down a little bit and that, that just makes things correct. We, we get it right.
Yeah.
And then when you're looking at juveniles and fines, no one's giving, no one wants kids to pay money. No, really, nobody does. And, and we know that that's just not a realistic thing to do to children. So, so for this particular ordinance, I, I just don't see it to be necessary at all. Kind of to put a maximum. And sometimes, sometimes you want the kiddo to hear. I mean, sometimes you want a fear factor, right? You want a reality check that, hey, you know, you disregarded, school already told you. Now we're telling you, and this could be big. Now, we're not going to tell them all.
Right.
Yeah.
I get it.
It's not big, but it could be big. And, and depending on kid, sometimes that is an impact. So if you take that away, for that kid, you've taken away the impact. So again, if you, if you cookie cutter it too much, you're going to lose the teeth, the impact. Certain things that, that are tools, although subconscious sometimes, but tools nonetheless that, that sometimes get the message through. So I'm never a big fan of, of imposing too much as far as strict. If A, B, because you just never know.
Thank, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, so you know, last time we had a, a discussion about this and then we asked staff to come back with, with their recommendations and they have done so, which is to not change it. Right. So, um, does anyone else have further discussion on this or would someone like to make a motion? As shown on your sheet here of we're on item eight A.
I would like to make a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance number 11, adding a new section 10 dash 258 to the Buena Vista Municipal Code concerning the possession of tobacco products by persons under 18 years of age.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, Swisher, Swisher. Sorry. Stuck on that word. Okay. So we have Swisher and Licretzi, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's, you know, we're working on, on the question of whether we should change. Thank you. Okay. So now we will move on to the special events in public spaces. And I don't think we've drafted this up as a, as a motion, but we could pass something tonight if we want to. Or we can ask staff to work on certain aspects of it. Leslie, is this going to you?
It is.
Thank you.
Yes. And I do believe that staff would consider this a rough draft of what you asked for. So we're not expecting you to pass this tonight. We know that this would need to go to Jeff for, for some workups prior to. But based on the last meeting and the appeal process led into a discussion about some possible changes on the special events code. And so we have met the rec department with the town administrator and we have worked up some proposals for you guys. Page 85 of your packet is a memo that just says, here's the things we noticed that you talked about and that you wanted to see changed. A good reminder for all of us from myself is that we have permitted successfully hundreds of applications for special events through this current code. And so I know that there are some things that we can change and we want to update it. But even hearing the conversation prior to this on sometimes you, if you get too specific, then you, you stop yourself from being able to have a, like a process with the person that, that's applying for this. And so we've changed some things that I think make it better, but also just wanted to say, you know, don't fear. We've, we've permitted lots of events in the same way through this code. And this is, this is just a super unique situation that we're in this year. And, and so I just, I wanted to start with that. But I just wanted to walk through based on some things we heard you say, some different proposals that we have. And then happy to answer questions or you might be tired of looking at the code after this. The first page there is just the definitions, definitions section. And currently it reads just like this. And all of the definitions that would be used for the special events are actually listed in section 11, 111. And so we're suggesting moving the definition, if this is possible, for special events. The actual definition from 1, 111 down to 120. We don't see it used anywhere between 111 and 20. And so this is the first time it's actually introduced in the code. And so we'd suggest moving that and then we're going to suggest an added definition. It's on the next slide. We're struggling a bit with the name of this, but we think maybe, maybe we've landed on this. A multi-year permissible event. And the definition of that would be that an event that's eligible to apply for a three-year permit and meets the following conditions. And so you can read them there. It's been hosted for three or more consecutive years. The organizer or organization has remained the same. So there's consistency in who's running the event. It's an annual non-recurring event and hosted at a similar date and time each year. Of course, we don't want to put specific because a lot of events are the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, so similar date and time. And then number four, we're, we're still working with the wording, but we want a, we want something in there that we have some discretion as staff to say, this is a positive event for our town. And there's no recorded negative impacts that town staff has seen for this event. And so we as a town staff review events and talk through events. And so we really, we want some, if, if we're going to give somebody a three-year permit, we want to make sure that we also have the discretion to say, you know, this isn't following what we're asking or this is. And then number five, no significant operational plan changes proposed and event organizer is willing to adjust as requested by town staff. This, but we pulled some of this from looking at the county has just started to do multi-year events. And so these are some similar worded that fit our town code better, but some similar statements there. So do we want, does anybody have a question or do you want me to go all the way through it and then take questions? What's preferred?
Go ahead.
Okay. Section 11, 121, this is the section called permit required. All it says is you have to have a permit if you're going to do a special event. We suggest adding these two bullet points here. Since we are planning to add a multi-year permit, we just want to say it's, it's required if it's an annual event. It's required if it's a, a multi-year event. Next one, section 122 is the permit application. This is a long piece of the code, but we just wanted to this, this piece about 30 days, 12 months, what's the actual date? There was a lot of confusion around that. And so our proposal is these two points that new events, not less than one month, nor more than 10 months before the event. Events that have been permitted and executed previously, not less than one month, nor more than 12 months before the event. What this does is creates a two-month hold for event organizers who have executed a successful event. They can apply the next day. They can apply the day if they want. But they have 12 months to apply. But if a new event was coming in that has not been held previously, they can apply 10 months. So any current event organizer would have a two-month window that they would basically have a hold on, on that space and that time. Also proposed on the next one, adding E to this section. We heard you say, there was a lot of conversation around what is a withdrawal, what's a formal withdrawal of an event? So we went ahead and put in that if they desire to withdraw, they should notify the town administrator in writing. Of course, we know anytime town administrator is written here, it also means or designate. Because those are the definitions listed. And so that could be myself as the designate of special event coordinating. And that when the town administrator or designate is notified of the request for withdrawal, they shall immediately cease the permitting process and fulfill that request. The next section we really focused on was 127 duties of the permutee. You can see it as it's listed currently there. We'd like to add a few things and we really took this section as we know we want to amplify the review process for our events. And one of the ways we're hopeful to do this is actually to review based on this part of the code. This is what they're supposed to do. And so we're going to review the events based on, did they do this? And so this is some of the wording that I'll be bringing to our special events committee meetings monthly. And so I'll sit with Chief Morgan and say, did they comply with the terms and conditions from the perspective of law enforcement? And we'll look at, and with Sean, based on public works and their piece or based on parks, did they comply with the conditions? So we're just proposing updating A there to just add that they should comply with the terms of the permit and of our code that surrounds special events. For B, currently it just says the person in charge of the event has to be familiar with the provision of the permit and that they carry the permit on their person. We propose adding the permutee and all of that staff shall conduct themselves in a professional manner that is positive for the community. Multiple verified complaints from event participants, community members, or town of Buena Vista staff regarding the behavior of event staff shall be grounds for future denial of event applications. And like I said, we want to use this section to review our events moving forward. The last little piece here of the code is some simple word changes. So in section 11, 120, since we are proposing to add definitions to that section, we'd like to also just add additional terms so that anything that's defined in 111 is also called up here. And in 11, 125, we have added the town administrator may impose reasonable and time-bound conditions on any permit. There was discussion during the last meeting about, you know, do we have the right to say, you have to, you have to have this done 90 days out or, and so we're, we'd like to add in a time-bound piece. And then in the appeal section, we just changed that no later than 30 working days after the filing. We had some discussion about the timing of if it's right before a meeting, then you know, it just is a lot to turn around and appeal that quickly. And so giving ourselves a little bit more time there. The last thing that I, you have this in your packet, I'm not expecting you to be able to read that. I just wanted you to see where it is. In your packet, it's page 91 and 92. And this is a letter that is linked on our special events application. And it says, please read this before you start filling out your application. And so this is already here, everything highlighted or additions. And so there just seem to be some questions around what is the process? And sometimes the code makes the process a little bit confusing. And those, you know, there, most people who apply for event permits don't read code for a living. So I understand that. I'm not, I don't think that that's a bad thing if they think it's confusing. I also think this is the type of document that they can read clearly and that they, they should be reading before they apply. And so I've changed in the first paragraph, just the timing. So that if we change the 10 months and the 12 months, that's in there. And then I've just added a timeline of the process to help them understand what they might be going through. You know, this is when you should hear from us. And then on the back, we've, this guide is listed and they can see this, but I've just added that they'll be reviewed based on that section 127, or 11, 127 of our code. And I've linked it there. So when they read this, they'll be able to click right on there and go, this is how they're going to review my event. And I think that the, this type of document, I can update at any time. And so this type of document, we can, we can say this is the process and I can take those highlights off. It's actually a Google Doc that's linked from our website. So currently it has the highlights on it. And, or if we want to change this process at all, there were some questions. Gina and I were emailing about just the timeframe, like can event organizers know that they're permitted earlier? From the perspective of town staff, that sometimes is an issue of what if there's a rockslide on that trail? That, and we permitted you six months ago. And then it's, you know, three months before your event and now we've got to go back and change everything. And what if you're going, well, this is my permit, so you're going to have to get it done. And we don't have the staff or the ability to do that. And so in order for town staff to fill in kind of the comfort zone of permitting is about 60 days. And that's where we run right now. But there is, part of the process is understanding that a lot of these event organizers need to promote their event prior to that, need to sell tickets to their event. And, and so part of the process often is that I can and have in the past via email or via phone call said, you know, I, I've looked through your application. We have all the information ready for department heads. I don't see anything that would lead me to believe you're not going to get permitted. You know, and same with, I know the county will do this as well, like it's a conditional green light. It's a conditional approval. But we're always reserving the right that the town staff might bring up something in the department heads, like in the committee meeting where they, you know, that we didn't think of or that we didn't see. And they might, based on their perspective, see that. And so it's not a full permit, but it should give people the confidence to move forward in planning their event.
Questions more? Yes, Mark?
Just a quick question on like the signature on the bottom of the application. Is there a box or somebody can check, you know, I have to understand and I, and really understand what's required.
Do you know, there is not, but there, but I have a note written right here that I'd like to change the application where the first question is actually signing that you've read this letter and that you've read the code. And so we can do that. That's easy enough for them. I mean, they'll just be typing their name as an electronic signature. But that, that could be added into our application tomorrow. It's a Google form. So I think that's a great idea. And then it, it starts that way. Right now they just say, it just says, please read this, but they don't have to sign somewhere that says that they did.
Leslie, I have just a question on your timeline on that letter. At the end, number four, the second, sorry, which is second sentence, it says, this is the timeframe where we'll need confirmation that you've received these other or conditionally received any additional permitting. I, I wonder if that's firm enough, like what, what is the deadline for that? Or is, do you want to be more specific? I mean, you're, it follows number three, which says two months, I guess. But I don't know if you want to specify there because that seemed to be a little bit of an issue.
Yes. And there was confusion with the, with the applicant that brought the appeal of thinking that the county permits, that, that county isn't even looking at either of those two applications until June 9. So they, they are about two months out as well. And so I could clear that up a bit. It really is.
So you can hold them accountable.
Yes. And, and one hard thing, I could give a deadline. And then that deadline, if the county hasn't had their meeting or BLM hasn't, BLM permits early. And so that's not as much of a, and multi-year. And so that's not as much of a multi-year. But if the county hasn't had their meeting where I can get Brandy from the county to send me a conditional approval. If, you know, so we, we could give them more like 60-day deadline. And then it might be their permit in hand, or it might be a conditional approval email from that agency. We could do that.
Gina? I just want to applaud all of you and the rest of the staff for the change you've made. I think it's great. I think the multi-year opportunity, well, hopefully it takes some time and stress off of both staff and applicants. And I think the, the 12-month and the 10-month is a great idea because then it does force the people that do want to keep coming back. They can't do the multi-year, right? Like does give them that safety net. It's like, hey, get it in, you know? And then the 10-month for a new person, you know, because they have the ability to apply for anything. But it's a 12-monthers don't get in those two months, but I think it's great. I really appreciate what you've done. So just want to say thank you.
And looking at the insurance provisions, is the administrator comfortable with making that decision as to whether, whether people should have insurance for events? Or should we have some sort of, based on amount of insurance or, or some sort of a?
You know, I missed that in the update because we talked about where it says in 126 may require that we just need to change that to requires because we do require liability insurance on any event.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I make a quick comment on that?
Sure, Jeff.
Sorry. So it says May for a reason. Do some of these permits involve First Amendment activity? Which people have a right to do, even if they don't have insurance in some situations. And some of the case law basically says that you need to consider their financial ability to provide insurance. If it's dealing with a First Amendment, like protest or some kind of a big event. So that's why it says May, because it actually sort of needs to, to have some discretion to not just prevent somebody from being able to conduct a First Amendment-type protest or demonstration if they can't afford the insurance.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Always some little tricky legal issue for the lawyers to, to make trouble with, but I wanted to point that out.
Okay. Other suggestions, comments, questions?
I'll just say that I really want to commend staff Shane and Leslie for putting this together. I gave them a list of things that I jotted down from our meeting that we needed to address. And they went with it and they came up with a really great, I think, code change of recommendations. So I really, and they did it quick. And so I really, really appreciate that and their hard work. And also when, when I was the city planner for the city of Wuthen Park, we did have blanket. We call them blanket, special event permits that were similar to this multi-year permit. So it's, it's, I think it's a pretty common thing. It seems like county just did it and now we're kind of following suit. But I think that this is a good thing. So there were a lot of things that came out of this that were good. And sometimes, you know, it's, it doesn't feel good while you're going through it, but it ends up giving you something even better. And so I love that.
Yeah. Thanks for doing it so thoroughly and so quickly.
Yeah.
Anybody else have comments or, or changes, anything they want to suggest about this before we address it in a more formal fashion?
I just have one more quick question. For, so looking at the, the draft for the agenda next week, the final item is business item at this point is special events and publics. Is that just to submit this or is that something?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, what do you mean, I believe.
I assume that, but I was just like, ah, if there's more information, I'm like, oh, what is that? You know, but God.
And we really had thought about maybe even putting that in consent agenda if there was a pretty good consensus, this, that this is good. But you know, we do need to put it into an ordinance format, so.
I guess there are reasons why you, no matter how long you've had the application, they've done their due diligence with their part. That you don't approve it until so many days before. Because if you're trying to promote and advertise something, you could spend a lot of dollars trying to advertise your event and in the end not get your permit. So I would think that is if they turned it in 10 months in advance, that you could process that application. And if they've done everything that they've needed to, and especially if it's a multi-year event, let them know that they've been approved so they can do proper advertising for their event.
What do you think about that?
Me?
Yeah, you. You're a user of this process.
I mean, actually, I assume if you have the multi-year permit, you don't have to come back and like you can't like, if you, if you get, if I understand it right, if you, you are awarded a multi-year permit, you don't have to, I don't think, check in every year. You can kind of go, maybe you check in.
But if you're. We're, we're kind of working through that process because we haven't done it before. But our idea is that you would have like a annual check-in where you report if there's any changes. We report if there's any changes from the town side of, hey, you usually use this road, but this year this road is under construction or whatever. You know, those types of things, some sort of meeting, but your permit, you would be permitted. And so you could advertise year-round for your event because you would, you would be aware of it.
And I'd like to address Cindy's.
Yeah.
If that's okay. What, what I, what I did when I was at the city of Wuthen Park was we would do a lot of conditional approvals. And there would be a condition in there that would say, you know, based upon the topography and the trails that are open now, we're going to go ahead and conditionally approve this pending no catastrophe. Or, you know, we, we would, we would anticipate those things and we would do language as a conditional approval that still helped us to give them what they needed, but it didn't sacrifice us in the end. And I think we could do a little bit more of that. I think, you know, that's what the conditional approval is there for. But I, I still think there is some validity to what staff is saying is that things can change. And if there's maybe two events in one day that are not similar, but they're both taking place and you've only got so many cones to put out, you know, then that there's decisions that need to be made. So.
So in the end, on the condition of cone availability, you could pull their permit?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that there are certain things that may happen. And maybe police and public works can give me some examples. That you can't anticipate that far out. And so we can do some sort of a conditional approval if, if that's preferred, if that's the preferred working method, but.
It's almost like you're approving, conditionally approving it. But if something better comes along, you're going to take it. If, if, if they have filled out the application, met all the demands, I see nothing wrong with giving them. Yes, you've got that date. This is your event and give them early permission, which gives them more time to plan their event, more time to advertise it. And it should be a smoother running event instead of them having to do something in the last little bit.
And I, well, I would just say too that I think we have done that in an informal way in the past. And there is, we're, I think staff would definitely be open to formalizing that process more. Because I would assume that, and this was Shane has used this verbiage, so I know this was prepared for me being here, that when we take an event organizer through the process, they're moving forward with the assumption that they will receive a permit. This situation with the appeal is the only time we've ever had to say, we can't say yes to this permit. Could you do a different date? We, we have never not approved an application. And so we've had a few people like their event, you know, they don't get enough people to get excited about their event and they pull their application or they cancel their event, but we've never not permitted an event. And so I think they typically are moving forward with the assumption they will get permitted. And informally, we have said, conditionally, you are like, you're approved for this and we see no reason why it's not going to go all the way through. I think we could formalize that process more if needed.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's just we, I actually think the language is already in there with conditional approval. It's just leaning more on that conditional approval. And you know, Leslie and I have been here, what, a little over nine months or something like that. We're getting close to that mark. But I can say that the longer that you're doing something, the more provision you get at. And I think that's kind of where, you know, she'll find her comfort level as far as, you know, what the conditions, anticipating what those conditions need to be so that she can approve them further out. So again, lessons learned and.
Yeah, Gina?
I was going to say, usually that makes total sense from like a race director side of things. And hopefully this helps Cindy a little bit. So any, at least in the running world, any like legitimate race, you have it like a policy where you're accepting money and things like that. There's like verbiage where it's like an act of God, like, right? If something crazy happens, like a whatever mudslide wipes out the trail, there's nothing you can do about, nothing town can do about it, right? So you're not going to get your permit for town because it's something catastrophic. And then those race directors generally, and you can also get race insurance sometimes, but, but usually with the participants that sign up, they also understand that the race director's working in a kind of a conditional landscape with those entities as it's, it's hard to give somebody permit super early because something could happen, then what do you do? But then also those participants that pay in, maybe you, I mean, as a good race director, you don't, you should be making money to an extent. And so you should have enough to refund them if the event can't go on. Or you reserve a certain amount of capital and what you, what you've made to cover your costs for like porta potties or tent setup. So, and if you can't do that, then you're not charging enough to even host juries. But anyhow, generally there is a little bit of checks and bounce. But like in my experience, you don't, generally wouldn't lose a permit unless it was something like super catastrophic. Or it would have to be like a heinous thing that the organization did for, you know, for crazy reason. But you don't see, I've never seen anything like that, but it's usually something like they call it like the act of God clause where kind of protects the race director in their language that's binding with the participant. I know this isn't like a super legal thing, like Jeff's on, but like, but every race director usually has that. When you sign up for a race, there's something in there that you have a certain date, you can refunds, blah, blah, blah. So outlines it. Not every race director does that, but it's to hopefully prevent or save, save all parties with that. Or just that basic knowledge.
So just do, Leslie, have enough understanding of Cindy's concern here to be able to incorporate it into the.
Yeah. I mean, I think, like I said, I think it's already, the language is already in there to give conditional approval. It's just, you know, filling, filling the freedom to be able to do that and anticipating what those things are. I really like the mention of the act of God clause because it reminds us of, you know, they're more than likely going to be required to have some liability insurance. And that's probably something that's in that liability insurance. And maybe it's something that we can require is part of that insurance.
Jeff, can we call that a force majeure?
That's the fancy word, Mary. Yeah, I, I, I think that obviously we want to be able to approve permits in advance so people can plan. But when you do approve a permit super far in advance, things happen that surprise you. And you know, it may, may generally be like a real extraordinary situation, like a force majeure, act of God issue. Like the road is washed out where you're going to have your race, you know? But you know, there could be others that we just can't foresee. And so I, I do think that if you get an approval way in advance, you, you may want to have some sort of a condition that, that, you know, if, if something happens outside the control of the race director or the applicant, that would make this permit, you know, no, you know, if, if the criteria for a permit would no longer be met at the time of the race, it could be withdrawn, something like that. So.
And I don't think that has to be written in the code. I think it's just something we put in as.
Oh yeah, no, it would just be part of the condition. Right?
We can template a couple of things less than I can so that we can prepare for those. Just have a standard condition that we put on.
Have a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. So are we good? Ready to move on? Thank you for all that.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Everybody's ready, right? Okay. Next item is Alpine West. We are going to hear an update on the county development known as Alpine West. And we will consider giving direction on providing water service to the development.
And I told Alex that I would go ahead and kick this off a little bit. I did include a staff report just to give you some directions, but just a couple of highlights. And obviously with what we're doing here has to do with the fact that there has been past history here. You know, there, there was a petition in 2021, December of 2021 for an annexation. And I wasn't here. Philip is online if we need some tribal knowledge and history lesson to answer some questions. But I'd really like to focus on what the task at hand is. And that is that he has now, because that has failed, he's gone to the county and asked for this same development. There's been a couple of things that he had tweaked slightly in the concept. But, and they have unanimous, unanimously approved it with conditions. And one of the conditions that was in there was that this property is immediately capable of being served by town of Buena Vista's water infrastructure and is desirable for annexations. So we have come sort of for a full circle. That was in October that they provided that unanimous decision. And he's kind of been waiting around for us to provide some, some idea of whether or not we would accept water augmentation certificates. And there's been some public comment on the topic as well that's kind of mixed into this. So I would ask actually, I know that Jeff is online. We did make some conditions here. We would like, what we would like is for him to present any changes that he's brought. Give you an overview of his, of his permit, which you had asked for at one point in time for him to come talk about it. And so he will do that. But what we're looking to do is to put together a non-binding letter. We're recommending that there be a non-binding letter that we could at least send on his behalf to the county so that he could start moving along. That would basically put three conditions on this. One, that town would finalize and adopt an ordinance that would accept upper arc augmentation certificates. And I'll let Jeff weigh in as well after I'm done here about whether or not we need to do a code change. Memorandum of understanding would be contemplated to finalize and approve the legal structure with which that ARC would allow the assignment of those augmentation certificates. So we put that as a condition as well. And then third, that he, he is the developer must purchase these augmentation certificates in the amount that's sufficient to cover the full demand of all phases of his proposed development. And this would be assigned to the town following the legal structure that's bound in condition number two. So that's what we're recommending to, to get him moving on his project. All, Jeff, did you want to weigh in a little bit on that code discussion?
Yeah, I don't want to get into too many details, but yeah, I think this, the question is, you know, as Joe mentioned in his comments and public comment, you know, Joel was saying, we don't need to have a code revision to be able to accept, accept upper arc, odd credits. And I'm not sure Joel's right. I mean, I, I said it confidently, which makes me always sort of think about my position. But the way the, the manager's code currently reads is that the town can take a fee in lieu or the town can accept water rights. And you know, odd credits are not water rights. And so it really depends upon how the town decides to basically allow upper odd credits to be used. If the town allows a developer to purchase them and then assign them to the town, we could then, we probably want to clarify that in the code. So it's just, there's no confusion that the town's actually going. We probably want to clarify that in the code. So it's just, there's no confusion that the town's actually going to allow. Developers to basically provide upper odd, upper odd odd credits. Pay a fee in lieu or provide water rights. The other option for the town is that the town actually purchases. The upper odd, upper odd odd credits. That's a, say that five times fast. And really the developers are just paying the town for the town to buy the odd credits. So there's a couple of ways to do it. I'll have to be fully decided how we're going to do it. So depending upon how we do it, we may want to change the code language, but. Ultimately, I think the town has provided, at least the boards provide a direction that. You do want to be able to accept upper odd, upper odd odd credits to some, in some method. So. Short, short of it is, we probably want to do a code revision depending upon how we ultimately decide we're going to basically be accepting them. Sorry for the long winded answer, but I wanted to at least not counter Joel's. Statement, but just say that it's a little, it depends a little bit on how we're going to do it.
And I know that just to put this in there respectively too is that, you know. Working through those details to make that work with upper arc. It, it just takes some time and there's, you know, a financial structure to cover any administration. Fees and, and costs that it would circulate through the town. And there's. Our water attorney needs to look at it. We need to fully vet it. It just takes time, but yet. Alex is, is here waiting. So Alex, if you wouldn't mind going ahead and. Looks like Chase already has your presentation up. If you just want to let him know when you want.
That's great. Yeah, I was gonna try and zoom in, run it, but I think I'll just, if you don't kind of say next slide. Do I get my address now?
Yeah, you go for it.
I'm Alex Teltorres, I live at two eight eight seven two County Road three thirty. Thanks for giving me some time here to come and chat with you about this. At least covered, covered everything I'm going to talk about. So I'll, I'll, I wanted to spend a little bit of time to remind you about the project. Give you those sort of the tweets that were made to it as it went through the county's process and then talk about the water and. And I appreciate you, you let me come helping me, helping me try and move the process forward while I understand that, you know, the what conversation is. He wants complicated and it's going to take more time, but, but I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to come and talk you about it. So. Put next slide there. So just a little bit about Alpine West. Yep, when I brought this product forward to the Town University for Annexation. Yeah, about eighteen months ago, we did talk about it called Stackhouse, but I would say that, that the project that. Went through the county process is ninety eight and a half percent the same as the project that you guys saw or excuse me, the previous board saw. But, but the, but here's the location like we had on the, on the screen there. The, the property is just a mile and a quarter. West on from the stoplight. Um, it's the, the property actually is on County Road three oh six. It's just side of three acres and it's. It's just adjacent to the West Wind subdivision right on the, the border of town. Now what's up? Talking and. That running my presentation here, but so with the, the location is, is. Is one, go to the next slide for a second. It, it's a, when I picked this, this property to come and bring a project forward. I read all the documents that, that the town wrote and the county wrote and that the, the wasn't the housing authority at the time, but it was the housing department at the county. About our, our housing needs and we, I really intentionally bought something that was. Located on every piece of infrastructure available, water, sewer, fiber, gas, everything that borders this property, this, this property. In fact, the. The water main for town runs over this property. US seventeen spent with, with me on, on that property. So I just thought I'd put this slide up just to, to show how this, where this is located in regards to the three mile plan. And just to talk about how the, the project is. Exactly what's requested. It's a medium density project. It's in the MSA, it's in the area of desired growth. And in accordance with the county's comp plan. Where we're trying to keep county counting and the town town, we're trying to push development towards Slide Apancha and Beunivista and so locating this development, right? As close to Beunivista as possible was my goal and that's what we're trying to do there. So. A little bit about the evolution. So when I bought the property, it had the, the. Development plan that came with it. It was planned for fourteen, fourteen half acre lots on this property. With cul-de-sac, it's called a lollipop subdivision. Which is no longer desired by the county or the town as it doesn't connect to town, doesn't connect anything. It's just an isolated thing. So. Worked with some really great architects, Palona, E D Studios and, and when I brought it to the town, that middle site plan is what you guys saw. With the previous board saw. And if you kind of compare it with current site plan next to it, you'll see that, that while we kind of rotated some things and, and. And tweaked a few of the unit types. In the end, we ended up with something that was nearly identical, which is that in the southern half of the development, it's all single family for sale. Half of the development, it's all multifamily with a little pocket of for sale. Workforce housing built in, trying to work something out with the, the land trust. So that we have a mixed income, mixed unit type development that includes market rate for sale. Workforce price cap for sale as well as apartments that are market rate. And, and a good chunk of them that are in a program with the J P Housing Authority. And price cap for people making between sixty and a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. So trying to do what you want in the community, right? We, we need everybody. And, and everybody needs a place to, place to live and. This project really tries to, tried to look at the housing needs assessment as it existed in twenty sixteen when I put together the initial project. We took into account the revisions that were made in twenty twenty two with the housing needs update and came up with a project that is. It's really trying to be what this community needs. So. Just some of the ideas that are in, in this project is that of the units proposed, including a lot of the, of the market rate stuff. Ninety percent of the units there proposed are in the housing needs assessment identified as needs for the community. Not ones, not things I want to do, things that the community needs. In terms of everything I just talked about, the deed restricted stuff, the for sale restricted stuff, the market rate stuff. We need all of it. And so it was really gratifying to get that feedback from the housing, from the housing authority when they looked at the project to say. Everything in this project is what we need. So just kind of cruise through there. We've already talked about workforce rental housing. On the south end of the project is, is a gas main easement that runs down and connects into Peak Street Trail. And so having this project be on County Road three oh six for, for vehicle access. Including access to the, to the bike lane or the bike, I'll, I'll do air quotes on three oh six because the bike lane is a little bit, a little bit narrow up there until you get down into town. But bike lane there, we have a, a plan to extend Peak Street Trail out to the subdivision through the, through Sunset Forward, through West Winds. And provide an asset that will be, serve the development, serve the community. It's pretty cool. We'll get into water here in just a minute, but the idea from the get go, from when I, I brought the town was that the developer myself, we were always going to be buying all the water. In town, out of town, didn't make a difference. That's where, where we're at is that we need to bring more water. So, so we'll talk about how we're planning to do that, but. In our conversations with town, with, with staff. Thinking about what happens to our water system in the summertime with our summer demands of how we, we get to those, those. I think it's twenty, twenty days a year where we're drawing down our tanks and we're really stressing our system. We really were intentional about the design of the development so that we would have low flow fixtures in the, in the, in the. Housing units themselves and that the, the yards, the landscaping, everything was very zero escape for water, water miser. What was, that was the thinking because that big spike in demand happens because we have lots of loans to water. And so basically we have a no turf policy in this development so that if you own a home, you don't, you aren't allowed to have turf grass. So you don't have the option to spike your demand in the summer. And so, you know, we just, I just had a really good experience working with town staff and with county staff to, to say, yep, with this, this should be part of our development plans. The roads are designed to connect to future development. The whole, the whole development is clustered around a big central green space so that there is, there is outdoor play space. You can throw a baseball, take a soccer ball. Wanted to be a neighborhood community, not just warehouse and people. So in my, working with the community, with the county. This, you know, this project is right because of where it is, it's subject to the I G A between the town and the county, as you're aware. And so all of the infrastructure, the streets, the curb, the gutter, the sewer system, the water system. Has to be built to town standards. It's part of what pushed this project in the direction that it went because. When you're required to pave all your streets, you know, might the, the development, the neighboring development that is just brown streets and then. No sidewalks, no street trees. When you're forced, forced to do that. Which I appreciate because it's the right thing to do. It's the kind of place I want to live in, is a place that's, that's a fully, fully realized. It's cost more. And so it, it necessitated the, the development. To, to go in the direction that you see here. So, but per the I G A, everything that's being built is being built to town standards. So, and as Lisa said, back in November, October and November, the, the county commissioners approved the. The project without asking me to change anything. Their conditions on the development. But, but they accepted it as presented. So. That's pretty, that was pretty gratifying. So, so yeah, so here, I'm, I'm, I'm here before you, I've been attending the, the water conversations that have been happening over the last few months and. Good conversations, lots to absorb. It's very so nuanced. I, what I felt and Jeff kind of said it a minute ago is that it, it seems like the conversation, we've gotten to the point where we. Where the town's relationship with the upper Arkansas Conservation District makes sense. And that we've got a, as a, as a community, we have an understanding of what those augmentation certificates do. And how they're backed up by water rights that the, the upper arc is already bought, run through water court. And has available for us since that's their whole function, right? That's all they do is, is. Pour water on our behalf so that we have it, stuff like this. So, so like I said, in, in twenty twenty one, working with, with town staff, with our engineers, with red water engineers. We came up with this plan that, that I'm going to talk about right now. So. Because we're, the development is in the county, not in town. Having an agreement for an extraterritorial water development agreement between the development and the town is what we're looking for. I've got on other slides, I've got lots of elastics about the exact number of augmentation certificates that would be needed. But more or less right now, actually keep, keep me on that last page. Forty eight certificates is where, is more or less where we're at right now with the, with the estimates that we'll pull up on that, that next slide. Because of how the depletion calculations work when we say we're going to build these many units, which will require this many S F Ds of water. And when that water gets given to those units, we're going to lose a certain amount and that's the depletion that needs to be made up by those odd certificates as the water flows out of the. Arkansas River main stem water structure, which is just the aquifer that's refilled as the, as the Arkansas River flows past. So we'll suck it out of there with well number three, feed it to the development. The water will flow through development, come back into B D sanitation sewer system, deposit it back into the Arkansas River. And broadly speaking, about eighty percent of the water will make its way back that way and will lose twenty percent to separation, watering and such. But that, that concept was, was, you know, with Joel at the time and, and Mark and Terry. And so we, we had lots of, lots of good, good thinking going on that went into this water plan. But. Water agreement, I purchased odd 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 to deed to the town, or as Jeff said, if you guys want to purchase some and I pay you for them, that's, makes sense for me to. And. When we build our infrastructure under our P I A, which will be fully reviewed by the town and approved, all the works directed by the engineers of. By White Red Water and other town engineers, it'll be designed and built and inspected and proved, accepted by the, the towns engineers. But we'll hook into that water. It's on the north end of the property. And the sewer is right there as well. Our, you know, our initial utility plan shows that every gravity flows back to the. Back to the sewer system and. And then the future owners, the H O A, or possibly a metro district, so these are the, these are the details to be worked out, will. Take on responsibility of paying those additional fees, those maintenance and storage fees that those augmentation certificates require. To maintain them with the upper arc. So yeah, that next page. So i- in the, in our process working here, this is a, in the, the tiny thing in the corner is this, the whole stamped letter. And I've assumed in on the, the actual spreadsheet so you could see the calculations that went into this, but. Crabtree down the slide, I remember my, my engineering team and. Between them and myself and Right Water and Joseph at the time, we, we kicked this back and forth, made sure that it complied with the twenty twenty one master. Resource plan for water and. And, you know, we, there is a, you build apartments, you can use this much water, this cost, you know, we. The engineers did their thing and we, we've got a number that we need to hit to serve this development. And I will point out down there in the bottom, there's an elastic that says these numbers to be finalized because there are, there are. Final conversations to have to talk about in terms of depletion as far as how, when we pull the water out. This already, these numbers already include the water losses that happen when water goes into the town of Beunivista system, but I just wanted to. Reiterate that this is. Or that we're very close, but, but just don't, don't hold my feet to the fire here. The next one there. Geez, thank you. Just, I just threw in a, a quick letter. I checked in with Terry. Scanning at the upper arc just before this meeting just to say, hey. I wanted to update, just to check in and say, yep, you know, we're still on the same page. And, and so he gave me this, this, he took that, that spreadsheet just saw. And the thing that doesn't happen on that spreadsheet is the conversion from gallons per minute for the demand. Into the, into the expected depletion that will happen and how that translates into how many augmentation certificates you need. So they have a whole, I, I love working with organizations. You guys have engineers, he has engineers, I've got engineers and never it can just. Be brilliant and tell us what you have to do. So that's, that's what this is here is just saying, yep, that we're going to deplete four point seven one nine acre feet annually and that's what we have to buy to augment and offset the depletion. So just a little basic overview is that in terms of who's paying for what. Like we said, the developer will, will be bearing the cost of the, all the water to be purchased for this. In an amount that's agreeable between the town and the development. This process where, because of the, I've made a water main extension request. That's the form of the, the letter I sent to the town with the check and that, that during this process. As we pull in Cindy and Jeff and Right Water, that I'm paying for those guys' costs and you guys are going to bill me for it. That when we buy augmentation certificates, there's the, the fee to buy them. And there's the ongoing annual costs. So in round numbers, it's four grand to buy an augmentation certificate. And it's a hundred and sixty five bucks here to maintain it. And so I'm paying the four thousand dollars. For each certificate that's needed and then the H O A is going to carry the cost wrapped up in that master meter agreement that we've been talking about. So that, that's, that's how it gets managed. That cost gets borne by the, by the future owners of the development and not by the town. It's next territorial water agreement. So, so you're guys are going to bill us at a, 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 at one and a half times a normal rate. So right now in town you pay. I'm guessing thirty eight, thirty, let's say, let's say thirty eight bucks a month. And so a, a house out in, in this development would be charged. You know, fifty six bucks a month. And then just because what I'm, what I'm asking for is for the. For the, the use of your infrastructure, when this development builds out, we pay tap fees. And even though we're building all of the mains and all the laterals and we're, we're building everything and paying for everything. We're still paying tap fees so that, that in the end, you guys have the funds you need to improve well number three, build well number four. The tune of four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. It's just for you to do whatever you need to do. The tune of four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. It's just for you to do whatever you need to do to make sure the development can get served. And again. We're, you know, we're paying that at building permit as we go along. So just thinking about, thinking about all the costs that might, that go into what I'm asking you to do. That we're, we're paying. So I've got a bunch of other slides in here that can illustrate things we've been talking about. I, I did a very, for myself, I, I. Built like a flow chart for thinking about augmentation certificates. So it's super simplified. It will be helpful to, to look at, it's helpful for me. But that's my presentation and that I guess my, my ask tonight is to say is, is like, like Lisa said. I'm asking for your, if, if you think this is something that, that you're going to be able to support, I'm asking for you to. To tell me so I can keep moving forward with the rest of my. I could tell my engineers, go, because we're going to be able to do this, send my architects to go. Because they're always, because we can't, until, until you tell me if we can go forward, can't go forward.
Questions, Peter?
Yeah, first I'll start by, I'm going to have a lot of apologies in what I'm about to say because I could totally misread the staff memo. Because I read it as looking for direction and preparing. So I thought there'd be like one more kind of vote. But it sounds like to what we're trying, what we're being asked right now is kind of. I wrote an email, which I would have said earlier, but again, I thought there was another stage. We're kind of asked, being asked tonight to, I guess, squeeze a proverbial toothpaste, right? Like after this, if we agree to this, then you're moving forward and you're heavily invested, highly see us pulling back or anything. And one of my questions, first I'll also say that I think I like a lot of things in the development. One of the things I think we've, as we've been discussing, affordable housing, I think one of the only ways, you know, we're trying to subsidize several things. That gets us to a certain point, but I think the only way we're actually going to lower housing costs is increasing a diverse supply of housing. So I think this offers a lot of, but that said, in the, we've had some land use conversations with county and as you said. What the, they're moving towards is keep the towns, towns and county, county. And in that, there's been discussions, slide brought it up and punch in, in us as well as. You know, if we do that so that development is still within the county as yours will be. There still will be added pressure on the municipalities. However, the way, and Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that. You know, sales tax is allocated to municipalities from the county is based off of a D M V kind of structure, which this development will be out of. However, there will be roughly two hundred people, if not more, who will be living here as big stuff, these new presses that are now going to be part of town. Which will be added pressure on the police department, there'll be probably another two hundred cars on our roads. And so will there be compensation for municipalities with this increased density in the county, which we may not see realized? And so I just don't know if we've had that question answered. We might have that, I don't know, but I don't totally feel comfortable. Saying, yeah, go for it, if we don't really know what the ramifications are for the town with this increased pressure, does that make sense?
Was there like a traffic study done? Can you explain some of the dynamics?
Yeah, and I, before I go into the specifics, that, that, keep in mind that I, my preference is for you to annex. You should have that tax revenue. There shouldn't be an unfunded impact to you guys. And that in this master main water agreement is language to allow you to do that. And. I don't know when you would want to exercise that, but. You know, I, I came to you guys to annex and, and it was a real bummer that it didn't happen. And it was outside of, you know, it was outside of the control list of this board due to, you know, an exterior protest from. Five landowners, but. But yeah, my preference would be, yeah, please annex, let me pay you for whatever you, whatever impacts there are. So the least, least point, we did a traffic study that, we did a traffic study the first go around, we studied the impacts. When, when the, and, and the impacts were that. There were enough, that, that the traffic volumes that were anticipated were not going to be. Something that would cause us to re-engineer the light, the light, add any signalization. In my plan, there's, there's turn lanes and some acceleration lanes contemplated, definitely a left-hand turn lane. When you're heading out three oh six, it'll be the first turn lane on three oh six, even though the volumes of rodeo road are triple what ours will be. We're going to still put in a turn lane to accommodate that anticipated. Future traffic growth from, you know, traffic back and forth to C B. But. Yeah, no, like I said, my, my, this, this is not, the goal is not to, you know, to externalize our costs on the town. It's part of town, it's being built to town standards, it's part of town. We'll stop.
It's part of town, though. It's medium density. Supposedly, so I've got a hundred, let's see here. Back to last year, but. Were one of the arguments, I think, for last year, but. You know, the farm has two hundred eighteen units, the total, or that's the plan. On twenty-one acres, which means ten units per acre. You're proposing a hundred and nine units. And that's not accounting for the two eighty U's for twenty-eight of those homes, which I think puts you at one fifty-six, if you would, which. Sixty-five, thank you. Which I, I mean, I assume you would, on seven point eight acres. So that's fourteen units per acre. Now, do you think the farm is a high density?
You know, when, when you talk about, I looked that, looked this up to make sure I was ready to answer this question.
What's it zoned as?
It's zoned to be, so it's currently zoned to be half finger lots.
It's an R three.
Are you talking, I'm sorry?
A farm. So my question is, what do you, would, would, would you see that as? What, what's your definition for it? Because in our, like, what that is set as now, it's an R three, it's a, it's known as a high density development and. What you're proposing, you say it's a medium, but there's actually more density per acre than what you're proposing. So it doesn't really fit with, I mean, if we're going to go back to annexation, which you had mentioned to me in our meeting, that that was not something that was. Being looked upon. So now my whole argument for what we were talking about is, or what I was thinking is kind of out the window because of. What I mentioned to me.
So if, if there's a desire for us to revisit annexation, I see that in the commission's. Conditions that it gives the option for us to do so, doesn't it?
Yeah, Jeff can, Jeff can clarify, but I mean, the, the location of this property. Is one in which if it's being developed in the county, at town's discretion, we can require a pre-annexation agreement to be in place. Which the primary things that does is require that all the infrastructures of town standards. And it has language that defines who can ask for that petition, that annexation to happen in the future. I guess I would, I would just note that. A property's current zoning doesn't mean that it is developed to the full density of that zone. It just, just to be, to be clear, R three arm, the farm is not developed to the, the full extent of density of the R three. So I just don't want.
Don't have to, maximum. You don't have to. But I mean, that's what it's plotted for. So you don't think they're going to build all the houses that they, a plan there?
No, what's plotted for is not what they could, you could build that whole thing with apartments, you know, have much higher density per acre.
That would be a high density. If I just, if I just did apartments on, on, you know, did three-story or did collegiate commons, did. Six collegiate commons. And, and so that's, that's what would fit out there physically in a compartment. That would be. You know, two hundred and sixty units, you know, it'd be a hundred additional units. And that would still be on, you know, on the low end of a high density development. Because high density is, is an urban term, you know, it's something that you have high rises and you have parking garages, that's high density. So, so a median density development is, is what's contemplated here because half, half of the, you know. Half of the development is, when I, when I worked it through the, the process with town, hat, you know, fifty percent of the land is being developed at R two densities. Right? It's, all those houses over there are very similar to, you know, kind of, where I used to live here, Arkansas Street. But actually, it's actually much further apart. All those houses are, are sixty apart, these are all going to be eighteen feet apart. So it, it's going to feel much, much roomier than what you see in, in town. So that's an R two O T density. That's, that's fifty percent development. The other half of the development is, is a part of the development. But I'm glad you brought this up because I didn't mention this in my presentation, is that one of the, the pieces of feedback we've gotten from the town process was that. We wanted to make sure that. That the visual impact wasn't. Was minimized as much as possible. So, and if you, if you look at. Chase, do you mind bringing back up my, like, slide number, it's before, the one before, with the site plan on it? What we did is, is we took the, the chunky apartment buildings and we slimmed them down and we pushed them apart. And we, and we turned it into a traditional neighborhood design, alley fed. Style of apartment complex. So no longer do we have an apartment company, I'll just keep saying collegiate common style apartment, you know. Big blocky apartment complex with a sea of asphalt. We've got things that, that read, when you drive by, it looks like a duplex. All the parking units funnel back into the alley and screened from the road and the, and the surrounding development by a traditional neighborhood design. And again, very intentionally because. That while it's not, this is, this is medium density, it's not high density, it's medium density. You know, it's, it's still high density for Chatham County.
And, and that's the key here is we have to remember he has to abide by the county zoning right at this moment in time.
That's right.
And so.
I'm, I'm here to ask you for an extraterritorial water agreement.
Yeah.
Because I've already got, the, the, the development is, is approved as, as presented here.
Right.
And it's, it's something that, that's.
Yeah, I just want to pull that, pull us back to that because I know there's a tendency to, to want to think about and contemplate about those things, which I think. You wanted to give you enough information of the changes of it. But really, when it comes down to it, what we're tasked with is whether or not we want to allow him. To give him a letter, a non-binding letter that would say, hey, if this works out with the water augmentation certificates and this gets added to the code. And per these conditions, we, we would be on board with giving you. The opportunity to do that when, at the point that there's. A water, a master, an extraterritorial master water meter water service agreement, it's a lot of words. But when that happens, then that would be our decision to say, yes, he can go ahead and do that. Because we owe that to the county anyways. I mean, they're waiting on this, on us to say either way. The other thing is, I, I want to go back to Peter's question. Philip has said I can address the tax implications. So Philip, are you still there?
I, I am. And I know it's not necessarily the critical point of the discussion tonight, but I, I just wanted to address. A little, little bit of what Peter brought up and kind of remind the board of what was included in the annexation. Or I guess the annexation agreement, which if it remains in the county. The town does not collect the, the small portion of property tax. We do collect water fees, as Alex pointed out, but we also don't carry the burden for street maintenance. The sheriff's office is responsible for that area in terms of law enforcement. And we also don't carry the cost of, of fire protection. That's if it remained in the county. However, these are additional residents and, and the town's primary funding source is sales tax. So you, you could look at it and say, well, the residents, future residents here will be contributing to our sales tax. So just, just some thoughts to consider there. And then finally, I just wanted to, to point out that. When we had drafted the annexation agreement before, when it was proposed. We did work with Alex on additional fees and things. That would, that would come to the town to help cover some of those things like road and road maintenance, snow plowing, things like that. So way, way more to consider. So I don't want to dive too deep, but I, I did want to address a little bit of what Peter brought up.
But Phil, from what I heard though, like, majority of what we get is through sales tax. And yes, they will be contributing to sales tax, they'll be going to city market, they'll be going to, you know, Little Daisy and everything else where we get a lot of sales tax. But the divvying up of that sales tax won't be proportionate to what I imagine is the burden on town for, yes. The sheriffs will be going out to the residents themselves to their homes, but that's also two hundred people who are going into town, going to the bars, getting in their car. You know, different kids going out to tag. So you have an additional population that could have a strain on, once they get off a county road, they're on a town road. And I just don't know, I just don't know if we've taken that into consideration, the calculation of the being in the county.
Absolutely. You, you, you're a hundred percent correct. The, the burden that does spill into town is, is absolutely a factor. Most of our sales tax comes from the towns to two and a half percent, and that would still be collected for all sales in, in the town. But we wouldn't get remote sales tax from those locations. And the, the portion that we do get back from the county, we wouldn't get that either. So, so you're correct, those, those are additional factors.
You're saying it'd be a minor factor, given the, what that might be in additional funds, even if they were included?
Yeah, I don't know if I would call it minor. I think that would be rushing to a quick, quick conclusion. Depends on how many cars are registered and all, you know, things like that. But the remote sales taxes is a, is a piece of it. So I wouldn't call it minor.
And I know we're talking about the water right now, but it does seem like.
Well.
This triggers everything else.
Well, and that's kind of why we wanted to give you some details, but not dive too deep, but.
We should.
I mean, if you're, if you're thinking that. If you're thinking that an annexation is something you may want to contemplate, it's probably better to bring that discussion up now because.
Maybe we can hear from Jeff what the pre-annexation.
Yeah. Jeff, please wait here.
Sorry, could you repeat the, what, what I was supposed to be laying in on? I, I didn't hear what Joseph said.
I'm, I'm just thinking that in, in the context of what we have before us, we do not have an annexation petition before us. What we do have is a request for water services agreement, which includes pre-annexation language. And it seems like some, some of the, the added burden to town and these questions about, you know. Future annexation or not, might be pertinent to the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, along with the external water service agreement, you know, one of the, one of the contemplated conditions of providing the service would be that. The town could basically require the. Property be, to be annexed in the town. So you could, you could basically have that condition as part of like a future requirement. When the town decides it's appropriate to do so. You know, that could basically be at any time during the construction. So that would be sort of, you know, one of the conditions of providing service if the board wants to do that. But you could certainly contemplate doing annexation immediately as well.
So it could be a condition they can add to this non-binding letter?
Uh, yeah, I mean, what I had contemplated with this non-binding letter would be sort of just, you know, a, a, a letter that goes to. Alex really, in case it can be passed under the county, saying, you know, the town board is directed, you know, staff to proceed with, you know. Preparing the agreement, preparing a pre-annexation agreement, you know, and, and, you know, provided we can get, updating the ordinance if we need to. Despite Joel and my, Joel and my discussion, if those conditions can be met, then it basically would say, and it could include, it could include a pre-annexation type obligation. And then, you know, assuming that those things are all met satisfactorily, you know, to the town, then. When signed, it would basically be the agreement to basically serve the property, including all the conditions that we talked about. Including a pre-annexation type, you know, annexation obligation in the future.
Can we, can we roll, roll this back a second to, I guess, this and talking about conditions, right? Like, some of the conditions mentioned here, like, I understand the point of some of them, obviously, but I don't feel the board is. I don't feel the board is actually given direction for some of these to even be a thing. So I'm kind of curious why that's like, right? So like, we haven't had a conversation yet. Have not given direction on if we will accept augmentation shirts. We might, we might not. So to have this as a condition, I don't think is. It doesn't make sense to me why it's here. Yeah.
It really does, but. We're we're trying to. To allow Alex. To move forward with at least some of his um. Design and and other things that the engineers need to be doing. While we're putting together the water augmentation certificates. Plan and processing and and all of those things that that will take time. I I guess it depends on your comfort level as to whether or not you feel like the water augmentation certificates is something that you want to add to the. Add to the code and bring to the table with the town.
Well, even as Mr. Benson even mentioned that, like, so if we want, if we want to move forward with this project with Alex. And it's this extraterritorial. Like. We're not sure about augmentation shirts yet, right? Because we haven't given direction on that. So if we wanted to do this. Couldn't we do it as a one off? Because I agree that once you start putting this language in, we start making conditions, so we potentially do. Structure code, we're setting ourselves up for a lot more trouble down the road, and I don't think. We're even close to that because we we haven't even given direction augmentation shirts yet.
The is, I guess. If you're if you're going off of what Joel had mentioned earlier that we. That we don't need to add it to the code, then that may be the case, but. I think you heard Jeff talk and I think he corroborated that potentially we should. It just depends on how it's put together. So I. I don't think we can say that it's off the table. As something that needs to be done. So if we condition it, at least it's in there to say. But you have to meet these conditions. And so he knows there's still risk with this. On binding letter, but it at least allows him to say. They're they're thinking about the water augmentation and they're looking at how it's going to happen.
So. Yeah, I think, you know, trusty look crazy. You're asking a good question. I mean, ultimately, if the trustees are not comfortable. Um, frankly, first of all, the letter is going to be, like I keep saying, non binding. It's more just to provide some kind of written documentation or. The direction that we're heading in. If the board decides, you know, look, we're not ready to to commit to any of this. I think, you know, ultimately, that's totally your decision. You have complete discretion whether or not to provide extraterritorials water service. And um if you're not comfortable providing direction to Mr. Tellers. That's completely up to the board, but I think that this is just supposed to be a structure that would basically. Um, be a suggestion of staff of the conditions that you could. Put in a letter to provide further direction as to where the board's contemplating heading. It's it's not binding at all, and it's not necessarily, you don't have to follow it. You don't want to.
If I can say something too, just the 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 thinking behind it, doing an extraterritorial water, right, where which is inherently one off. Where you're not making a commitment, you're not, you're not putting things in your code that says now we do this. It's it's kind of like what Joel was saying, where it's where current current code says. If we like augmentation certificates, we can accept them. In this one one case, doesn't say we always will, doesn't say we're adding to our portfolio. It just says, in this case, for this project. We think that they will, they will suffice, they'll meet meet our standard. And so it doesn't. I want to make sure you're you're not.
Depends on how it's written, I think.
Well, yeah, but your lawyer is going to write it, so I think it'll be okay.
But can we say, um, as you were suggesting that that uh these. That we'll accept them for out of town developments only. At this point.
I believe that's how it was written. I think that's how it was written.
I think the the idea behind. A precondition. As mentioned in the staff report is is acknowledging the authorization or the authority that you all have. And need to um give. To this whole idea of augmentation certificates. Um, I I think the. We we're all acknowledging, we don't know whether we need a code amendment for Alex's development or not. If we don't. We've satisfied the precondition because where it says we need to do anything that we need to do in order to accept augmentation certificates. If we do. You all will be the ones that decide, is that only out of town or also from town? And that may be two different decisions, right? And I think that's part of how. The water conversations have been progressing over the past six months is. Uh, baby steps. Um, and the next baby step, based on the direction that we have maybe from the past few work sessions is. We're open dog certificates. We need to take that next step and actually think about what it would look like collectively. Um, and this is part of that. So I don't think. The the letters, as Jeff has said, non binding, it's also acknowledging that we don't know today. But that we have to know by the time we sign any water services.
I guess I I mean, I hear all of this, but just in simple language, I would like to kind of decouple these things and figure out a way to. Uh, address Alex's situation. Without what I see as sort of a change in our water policy toward. Not a preference, but a huge tolerance for augmentation certificates. I do think, I think I'm marrying what Gina said is that. That feels like um. It's a it's a it's a policy uh change in policy direction from the fee and Lou that I thought we. Favored um until the augmentation augmentation and I I'm not saying there won't be a need for augmentation certificates going forward. But I'd like him to be maybe limited or just. Somewhat restricted to if the town doesn't already have that water um. Available for fee and loop or just certain circumstances, annexations or something like that. So I'm not sure how we do that, but it seems like. If there's a way, find a way to help Alex. Move ahead or help resolve it however the board wants to. I'd like to see us do that and then take up the policy. Decision later is that do you see that being possible with.
I think that's exactly what what at least I was contemplating with with the way that this staff report is written is is exactly what you just said.
Good, okay, because I I mean, following our discussions, our water discussion, again, I don't want any any developer stressing over water, but. I also don't want it sort of to be open season on augmentation certificates. I think that. Starts to become chaotic and surprise the town is in control.
Yeah.
Over planning and and development.
I just to jump in, if you want off. Gee and Lou is way simpler for me. If you guys, I in my in my estimation and from listening to conversations, you guys just don't have the water. I I. I I don't think you would be comfortable selling me the water. Which is why I've gone out and found the water. To hand to you to get to me.
That is kind of hard because we really don't have a lot of water. And so to sell it to a development that's outside of town. It's hard for us, you know, given that other developers wanting to develop in town.
Yeah, like like I said, if if you had the water, if you had a a big water portfolio, I wouldn't have bothered going shopping. But. But again, this is this is why that. This is why the that water sitting there is is for this. This is the point of it. It's we because, you know, Punch Punch Springs has gone through this kind of agreement, Slay has gone through this kind of agreement where they've they've had these conversations and they've got the relationship with the upper arc where they. Who accept. These uh these these, you know, certificates. So um so I I think um and and I I would say that that listening to the conversations that have been happening. And listening to um. You know, to Cindy and Jeff. Saying that that there is more, there is more finalization to be made before our comfort level is a hundred percent with these. But that what I heard in those meetings and is that. Not only are they a good idea. Because they're not, you know, an augmentation certificate is backed up by multiple water rights. That it's actually in a lot of senses, it's a better product for me to bring an offer to you than a just a traditional water right. That then we gotta run through Water Corps for five to ten years and then it's a single source. I do, I I'm a broadband developer, so I work and all of my projects have to have redundancy, have to have multiple sources feeding into into serve a community. And uh, that's what I love about auxerts because they are based on a portfolio of water rights backing them up, not just a single water right.
I'd be curious to hear if Mr. Benson has anything to add since he was the water specialist. For years, that's.
Are you prepared to address this?
I just, I think that.
Sorry, this is not. Jeff, could you advise us on this?
Yeah, it's it's up to the town board if they want to take input from somebody or not. It's fine.
Are you prepared to add something?
I just would, uh, I think it's a great conversation. I think Joseph and Lisa are spot on with uh, this is a. Opportunity for that letter. Um, and some of that code language can be worked out. I think I think it's important to keep in mind. Um, when this was originally presented, it was for upper water uh augmentation certificates. Because the town did not have the conversation going yet with with the idea for that fifty acre feet. Of water augmentation certificates. So the the two activities are happening at the same time. And this was a way that um Alex could get some water, get that development. Um, and also be able to have um. Frankly, pretty good contribution to Cottonwood Creek through the irrigation things, you know, which is pulling. Upper uh artisan water to that creek. So um, I mean, I think it's great. I think it's. Great to be aware of how how can you preserve if the code language needs to change, how can that happen so that it's. A one off or uh or for extraterritorial or out of. You know, whatever it is, so it isn't some kind of open season and I I just think it's a fantastic conversation. I just want to. Uh, you know, come in the conversation and also just add that little bit of history for um. Why we're having a conversation with Alex in the first place of certificates. The idea that the fifty acre people would tell us certificates that we could build up.
And I'll thank you that 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 I'm I'm taking, I'm coming to you because. Because while the the annexation process failed. This board, uh, a majority of this board supported it. And it wouldn't move forward. Absent those uh. Absent the protest. And so I took that as meaning that because the the plan is identical, hasn't changed. I took that as as meaning that. You already in support of it in the past. Which I know it's not the same board, it's not the same project, but but conceptually. We were already there.
Comments?
I mean.
I just I just have maybe some questions or or clarify a couple of things for for public works, I guess. And I I saw, you know, limited outside use, I saw that your engineers. Kind of put a pretty. I guess um. We always look at, you know, our water scenario, worst case scenario, right? We're we're throwing point eight and C F S away because we're concerned about climate change and. And things like that. So you went from twenty. Average use of twenty six GPM to sixty five GPM with limited outside use. Do you know, I'm just kind of curious how you got there. And I guess in the other part of that, um. Does county have like landscape requirements? I know that in. Residential um development in the county, they're limited on turf. Types of grass that you can use outside and. Um, just kind of wondering, and I know you're just working with the sketch planner, I know it's conceptual, but. You know, I was concerned about maybe wanting to see if there's any way we could optimize some of the open space with stormwater, things like that, solutions. And other than that, I. I think it's fantastic. I think you've done a lot of good things that, you know, we've been seeing limiting the outside use, which. Turns our, you know, peak demand from, you know, two hundred and twenty gallons meter to two eight hundred fifty gallons meter in the summertime, and those are huge impacts that we're. Looking to to solve, you know, moving forward with with our community. But but yeah, that number was pretty high. And then I guess, you know. I'm never going to be able to remember them all, but I know that, you know, when we're planning for developments, I I know what we have, I know what we have on. Ten or three or six, you know, a pretty large eighteen inch uh water main transmission line. But like if we're going to size for the demand, size for the future, how do we get in front of that, you know, while we're here at this point? We're planning for comp planning in places that we can grow because it seems like an area that if we were going to grow. That's one of the areas I could see an opportunity for the town. Keep my public works out on. For the most part, but I just want to, you know, identify that if this is an opportunity for some development, we need to do some strategic planning to look at watering sizing. If we do move forward with this.
That seems like the only directions to me. That we can grow.
But I but I just, yeah, I know that. GPM is probably, you know, a worst case scenario number. I I just don't see where it's coming from.
I I my understanding is it came from conversations between Crabtree and Wipe Right Water. And that, yeah, so that our, yeah, our base flow is. Yeah, thirty six thousand at full buildout, building every every inch of every ADU of everything. Thirty thirty six thousand. I can't remember off the top of my head. Actually, Jason, do you wouldn't mind going to that one? It's the the spreadsheet looking one. It's it's down. It's down on that one, yeah. Yeah, what is that? Twenty six gallons per minute. With the with a peak flow risk of sixty five gallons per minute. So um, like, yeah, like we talked about, so you um. As far as county landscaping requirements. We do have the landscape and we have requirements for fencing out, you know, to to do privacy screening between the existing homes and this development. There's going to be landscaping on on the road, but. But my commitment is. And and what they accepted, I guess, from us is that is to zero escape all of the shared spaces. We're going to be using rocks, native plants, native grasses. Uh, you know, the central green is a green space is a half acre of turf. Um, because that's all anybody gets if they don't want, because because the their backyards are tiny. They're these little postage stamps. Now we're an offer after turf and and, you know, our decorative flagstone, that kind of thing. Um, but uh, but I agree with you that that sixty five gallons per minute is a, I I don't know. I don't think that in my mind, that's an engineering. calculation, but there's no scenario in which the development could ever do that. But has to be in there so that the town can think about it as you're thinking about sizing your infrastructure and thinking about that. You know, it it for for me, thinking about, you know, the 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 demand on well number three. Right? That that you guys, you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you recently re permitted the well for five hundred gallons per minute, pompous size for three hundred gallons per minute. Hundred and fifty of that is dedicated to irrigation of the turf fields and such that are there. So there's basically. Hundred and fifty gallons per minute of new capacity that could be brought to bear on new development in general. And that I'm asking for in five years. You know, a max on those twenty days of the year, sixty five gallons per minute. But again. Not really, it's going to have any grass except for the lawn that. We're not going to water when we're under stress, so.
Are the uh augmentation certificates looking at that sixty five GPM already looking at a lesser number? Would you calculate a day could be?
So they're they're looking at the demand, the demand over the whole uh, the the plan demand over the course of everything over a whole year. And so.
Average.
I say like average, average over the whole the whole year. So they're not, it's not so much they're thinking about the the given flow. Because that's more about a conversation. We've got to have if the infrastructure can supply it. But um, but the amount, because the amount of of augmentation that's needed is based on how much water is depleted from from the arc. It's not based on how much demand is on a given day. That's why that I had that next slide about like how much depletion is going to be, which dictates how many auxerts are going to be needed because. They're they're both important conversations, but they're not actually related. But this this is more for to say that that the town's engineers. Based on our our build out for our hundred percent build out, say we'll need this much. And so with that in mind, we got to do capital planning, got to do side meeting out main sizing, that's got to be thought about. And. Wait in this conversation.
I would throw out there that we can definitely add landscaping as one of those areas that needs to be reviewed and approved by town. Along with other, you know, the other infrastructure that already would need to be. So like the soil amendments under the saw, um, how are we making sure that we're laying eyes on that? Um, in line with best practices for water retention.
Yeah, and actually, that's a, that's going to be an interesting little tug of war because the park is designed as a park on part of our stormwater management system.
It's fantastic.
So trying not to have big gravel fields that are just. Waste of space.
Question for you, Sean. Kind of kind, well, I kind of talked about it a little bit earlier. It's one of my original questions when first looking at everything was was. Could well three? could well three handle it, right? Like, I don't know, I don't know the capacity, but, uh, Sean was super helpful. And let me know, it's like, was it three hundred gallons per minute? Um, and then a hundred gallons per minute for irrigation, I think.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I gave a little bit of a buffer, right? Because we're, our well, well three kind of has similar, like, we have peak demand moments during the day when maybe we're wiring the high school baseball field and some of the, you know, larger stuff. Um, so at times might want to pull, right now, we're only pulling about seventy five gallons a minute from well three, which is what we can continue to do with. Um, it's just that well three has a lot of pressure on it and it's really frustrating on our staff when we can't water more at the same time. So we're pressured to water between that, um, that six P M to ten A M time. And we're like, I don't have time to do all the stuff. And it's great because we have a lot of, you know, a lot of water that's, that's, that's be pulled off that well was taking pressure off of our distribution system. Um, and yeah, so I, I would say that it's probably somewhere between, you know, two hundred and a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. That's probably available on well three for the potable water side. And yeah, I mean, that's, you know, in the range of like twenty odd acre feet a month. And I'm looking at it monthly because I don't really want to look at it through a course of time. But if you wanted to look at it through a course of time, it's probably, you know, twenty, forty, sixty, you know, sixty acre feet of water in three months. It's probably closer to twenty five um, acre feet a month, twenty to twenty six acre feet a month, give us, you know, the hundred and fifty to two hundred gallon per minute range. That's about what that number comes out to. So, you know, um, you know, when you look at the average demand, you know, being, you know, or, you know, being twenty six gallon per minute, you know, that's and then you can look at the peak demand being sixty five. So you see that proportion kind of starts pulling away from that, uh, you know, that, uh, hundred fifty to two hundred gallons a minute. So you know, like, it does take a bite out of it. Um, and I would anticipate that, you know, during the winter time, that well would never be gone, right? Because we have plenty of water coming down the pipes from the water plant during those months. Whether that helped or not.
That's helpful. Because what I was getting is like, so if we did this and then, um, so I was trying to convert the acre feet to gallons per minute and it's tricky. Um, but just, you know, if like, if indeed we do do aug certs for, you know, you have the crossings and the homes and the other things, right? They might have to utilize pump, I'm sorry, well, three is also, and they are technically in town limits, right? So that's where I come up, you know, like, so you would be kind of taking up inventory on that well. Is that something that we want? If we know we only have so much inventory for other projects that might indeed, if we change the code and they're like, hey, aug cert, yay, let's go town. How do we balance that? Then what happens with infrastructure with well three, right? Then we might have to expand that. And I don't think well four is ready for anything yet, but.
I can think directly to that, actually. That's, that's what the TAP is for. Because right now you have three hundred gallon capacity because that's the pump you got in that well. But this development throws off hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve your water system. And you recently re-permitted that well for private gallons per minute. And so, uh, spend some of that money, get a bigger pump because this, this project pays its way fully throughout. And that, and that's why, because that question, it, it would be reducing inventory, but I'm not because I'm, I'm paying for whatever I need.
Well, we'd have to build more, it sounds like eventually, but the money that's becoming would help with that as we're selling.
It would pay for it.
Or, or well four.
And that would make, you would be comfortable.
We don't have a lot of, I mean, we have a little bit of capital investment left in well three, but it's, you know, it's it's not that much. It's not that big. We're getting close to being done with it. So a lot of the heavy lifting's been done already.
Okay.
And then implicating, you know, the, the problem with, with permitting that we're all for or being able to produce five hundred gallons per minute with well three, it's limited on the casing. So when we pulled the permits for that well, we, we were like, hey, we could, you know, we can pull a permit here for five hundred gallons a minute though. But because it's a smaller casing, it's probably going to be kind of crushed to go and produce that. So we're sizing it for about three hundred gallons a minute right now. So, and right now we're just finishing getting, um, C D P H is approval for coring treatment at those levels. So.
So it would be around three hundred versus five because of the case in that.
Yeah, I can't fit that big of a pump in that to pull five hundred gallons out. It's getting, um, but I mean, that's why we're looking at well four.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Well, I don't think we should leave Alex hanging forever on this water question. Um, you know, you brought it forth before and, and then we couldn't get the super majority vote that we needed to pass it. So then you've gone, you know, you, you must keep spending money and, you know, just uh, additional fees all the time. Um, I'd like to, uh, to have us decide on a course of action that we can, you know, push forward and, and get whatever approvals we should have for the augmentation certificates. Trying to get you rolling on it.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've been kind of quiet this for a while now, but I've been, I haven't been falling asleep yet. But, uh, I haven't paid attention and I've been, I've been really looking over the filtering questions that we don't always, uh, look at here and, um, really thinking about our collective vision for town. And I really feel that this, uh, project, you know, even though it's a county project now, really checks a lot of boxes to really support our town. Um, you know, it does have more people and I really see that as benefit to this town. There's a lot of, you know, whether it's supporting businesses as in having workforce housing for employees, but also customers to support a more vibrant year round economy here. Um, and I think, you know, supporting this project is really going to help a lot of people who are trying to stay here and trying to live here. And I have many, many friends who have moved away because they can't stay here. And, uh, I like this project. And I, I support it. And I look forward to seeing what happens with it. I think it's also you know, worth noting that developers don't always do this. They don't always bring things that we need for town. You know, if I'm looking at housing that's happening here in town, I took a notice of the north side properties that are going up right now. And I was like, oh, there's one for sale. How much is that? It was one point two million. So, um, just to see something that is, you know, more focused on working people in town is something that I feel is beneficial for collective vision and for, uh, the people of town.
Thank you. No, I didn't think you were falling asleep.
Well.
Never occurred to me.
I'd like to.
Uh, what else?
I, I would just say, I, I also like the development. I would like as part of the condition to find a way to get the town proportionally whole, if you will, if that's either through annexation or if it's, um, you know, if it remains in the county, I think this is also a question, again, it's a bigger question outside of just your development that we're going to have to tackle if we are incentivizing more development towards the towns that still remain in the county. But if it is either uh, an additional percentage of dispersment of sales tax from the county into the town, or if it's annexation, but I like for a way to make sure that we are accounting, uh, not against more people. I just want to make sure that we're not putting an overdue burden on existing services that's not accounted for through taxes. That makes sense.
Yeah, and I.
You would want to add a condition to what we have here? Then.
I think it would probably end up being in that, in that actual agreement in pre-annexation language. I'm not sure that, that detail would, would.
Would trigger that.
Would, would necessarily make a, a difference either way.
So it wouldn't have to be part of the condition for, because it sounds like granting to the water triggers for the county to go through. But if we're going through an annexation, then it doesn't matter really with county, I guess. Is that also right?
Yeah, the, the legal agreement that, that would come back to you all for actual approval at some point um, would include pre-annexation language based on our I G A with the county. And in that pre-annexation language, you already need to be comfortable with the triggers and the ways in which TAFR is having options to cover the burdens that might be produced by the development. So I think that, that legal agreement that will come back to you is the actual place where
that language, instead of all the condition for this.
But it's good to hear everyone's perspective on that right now because we need to know kind of what you're thinking on that. And so is that?
How long will it take to get, uh, well four going?
So, uh, becoming to the board with agreement next, at the next meeting for Mike, right? Why are they proposed to provide the town engineering build an RFP kind of scope services for about sixty thousand dollars. And so we could maybe have an RFP out this fall for a well construction. That doesn't include, um, you know, the treatment side of things. That's just constructing the well. And based to, to work on a water treatment plant. Um, we're still looking at kind of identifying the location. We know that when we did the, uh, the pump tests on well three, almost two winters ago, we saw that's, that's what we saw, the capabilities. We saw that there's a pretty robust water source, you know, down there in that, in our river park area. So looking at optimizing the location is a little challenging because we we spent a lot of money on the transmission line going to well three. So it'd be fantastic if there would be some way that we could utilize that. We could add some cost savings. If we can't do that, then we're probably likely looking at putting well four somewhere north of soccer field with the high school baseball field, like smack dab in the middle of the frisbee golf course a little bit. Um, so I mean, but those are, you know, because those are connections that we have on um, Arkansas Street in velvet right there, you know, at that intersection right there. So that would be a good way that we could connect because we have to have the water and the chlorine hang out with each other before they get to our first customer. And it's usually based on size and length and gallons per minute. So that's where we're at. And we've already looked at two different locations. So I have a question. I, I don't know. I mean, I'd say probably you know, three years. Well, poor. That'd be, that'd be pretty pretty aggressive, you know, we're, you know, we're working on a water plant right now. And, you know, we have, you know, we have few developments going on as well. We're pretty busy and so, you know, we're, we're looking, but, but we've been looking at it, right? We, we knew it was coming. So that's why we thought you should, that's why we put it you know, the hundred fifty thousand dollars engineering budget for well four this year. So, or it should be.
Okay. Thank you. Comments? Questions? Action?
I'll make a motion.
I would be, um, okay, uh, with this as well. Uh, but for me, the biggest issue is I, I really don't, I'm not excited about the idea of a potential code change. So I'd be willing to work with this. Navigating away from that. So, because I'm very nervous by doing a code change. It will create issues for us in other ways. And I think right now with all the stress town is under, uh, I don't want to open up more potential doors for trouble. So, um, I think there's probably a way to, to do something here, but I would I would, I would rather not have to do a code change to make it happen. So.
And I guess I would ask if this is possible without a code change, not that we would never make one, but just to, I'd like to have the board consider the balance of water augmentation certificates and fee and lieu. I'd just like to have us discuss that again in light of all the conversations we've had. So the bottom line is can we move forward with this without a code change?
Well, yeah, I mean, to be fair, I don't see a water services agreement being ready for your approval before having more discussions on what water ordinance might include, whether it includes augmentation certificates or not, and if so, how? Um, so the idea behind this non-binding letter was to allow Alex to be able to move into the final class stage of the county, which is going to take a while.
Yes. Three to a hundred and twenty days, Michael.
And, uh, great goal. Um, and, and, you know, simultaneously, we, we have been on a track of discussing water earlier with urgency, and I think that would continue. So I, I would be shocked if we would be trying to bring a water services agreement back to you before we've answered the question of do we need a, a code change or not? And if so, what would that look like?
Okay.
So maybe, maybe I can, can I ask, I know I'm not a trustee, but I can ask Jeff, is there, is it possible for the board to accept augmentation certificates as the water source for, for an extraterritorial water service agreement? Because you want to? And you're supported by staff saying you can do this. It's a good idea. Is that something they can do?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not comfortable with giving you a great advice on that right now. I, I don't, I, I'd rather have that conversation separately, but I don't think that, uh, the reason why we're saying the code change was needed was because I thought a code change was needed. There's a couple of ways to do it, which, which is the issue, right? I mean, we could just basically take a fee and lieu and then buy the odd credits ourselves. Problem with that is I'm not sure our current fee and lieu, which is the code says needs to be set annually by the board of trustees, is going to be the right fee and lieu. So I, I do think we're going to want to do a code change and, and I'm having, uh, so I think we need a code change. Let's make it simple.
I, I guess my, thanks, Jeff, and thanks for not giving me, yes, I should ask my own attorneys. Uh, but I, um, I guess my, my goal here this evening, if I drill all the way down, is just to be able to move forward in good faith with the town to understand that we are going to be able to work together and to give you time to work out, to answer these questions. Get real comfortable with, with the future for, not, not just for me, like, like it's been said, because a lot of development coming down the pipe. But to, to give me the comfort, a comfort level that says we're going to work together, we're going to make this thing happen because it does, like Devon was saying, this this project is designed to deserve, to serve all the goals that you say you want. Period. And so I, I think it's a good project and I, I want to be able to move forward and, and, uh, yeah, and not, no, spend another two hundred grand on this thing to, without being worried that, that all of a sudden we're going to say, no.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, Devin.
I'll make a motion that the board directs the town administrator to prepare a non-binding letter with the conditions as outlined in the town administrator staff report dated May fifth, twenty twenty three, agreeing to provide water to the Alpine West developments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second, I guess, but well, before I second, how do we make good on that? I mean, so what, what steps, just to go back over the steps that would need to happen for us to do that, that we've discussed tonight? Yeah, I mean.
The conditions that are, that I can link out.
It's on page ninety four.
The conditions are that the town, number one, the town must finalize adopted ordinance or ordinances that allows the town to accept upper augmentation water to satisfy its water dedication requirements. And two, the town must finalize and approve a legal structure currently contemplated as a M O U attached with the upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District that allows for the assignment of augmentation certificates from a developer to the town. And three, the developer must purchase augmentation certificates in an amount sufficient at town's sole discretion to cover the full demand for all phases of the proposed development. These certificates must be assigned to the town following the legal structure of number two above. And the town will only be obligated to provide water service to the subject property upon execution of an extraterritorial what master meter water agreement, which will contain the relevant terms and conditions of service. So that's all in what you're imposing.
Exactly.
So is there a second?
Were you second? Are you trying to second?
No.
Okay, because I just want to read something here again.
Ninety-four.
So just, just to clarify, Lisa and Joseph, if we adopt an ordinance, I mean, can we, can we make it specific to Alpine West as opposed to, I guess, or I'm getting a little confused here, but none of this involves the code change right here, right?
You you will have one hundred percent discretion on what that code says.
Okay, okay, all right.
When, you know, when it comes through.
Okay.
Yeah, and we would not codify something for a specific development, but we could absolutely codify that.
The circumstances.
That it's only for add-on development or only in X, Y, Z.
Sure. Okay, then I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, oh, I think we should do this as a roll call.
You may or say. Trustee, how?
Yes.
Love to your mind conservative. Great. Okay, Peter.
Yes.
Think this.
Yes.
Plus the courtesy.
Yes.
Yes.
Rusty Swisher.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll get that letter worked on. Thank you.
And thanks to staff.
Yeah.
Okay, trustee interaction. Let's go through this and speak with one another and then we will move on to executive sessions. So.
Okay, so. Definitely. Well, just a quick question, Lisa, do we have a date yet for the goals? Or are we going to talk about that separately?
So I sent out a heat map app, if you will, that kind of tells me what dates I can get everyone in one room. Many of the dates I I I did get the last two responses in there, so I appreciate that. So it's looking like May thirtieth has some potential, but there's still a trustee that is not showing that can make it. So I wanted to have a discussion. Well, actually, a couple of trustees, one of them only for an hour or two and and the other one for the whole time. So I need to follow up with those trustees, see if there's any way that they can schedule around that. Otherwise, I need to give you more dates, I guess. But the further out we get into June, the less likely this is going to happen. So I guess I'd like some direction on, you know, to me, this is a very, very important meeting. I feel like everyone needs to be there and I I want everyone to be there. I want to schedule at a time that everyone finds it convenient, but I just don't know that I can do that for all all seven of you. And so I'm trying very hard to to schedule it so that everyone can attend. But it's just kind of a, it's not an easy deal. So so I I will, what I think I need to do is just follow up with those trustees and see if there's any way for them to make it work. And if not, then would it be your recommendation to give you more dates and times and see, I mean, I feeling sort of self-defeated with this whole routine. And I I'm trying very hard to come up with a way to.
Would we do it like in a two-hour session?
So now the way that I
or something like that?
Let me give you some background on the way that I want to to craft this. I have department goals. Really, there's a pretty much an equal number of department goals to trust me. So what I had intended to do to cut cut down on the goals retreat itself was as part of that assignment, give you a department goal. And then you would say to me, Lisa, I'm on a schedule half an hour Zoom call with the department head. You would craft some questions according to your 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 vision goals that you have right here, which Devon did an excellent job of mapping to earlier with decisions. Those same categories can be used for us to look at goals as well as, you know, a couple of other SMARTful things that I'll put in that'll give you that information. So you would just look at these and you would come up with some questions, take a half an hour, schedule a meeting with me and the department head and ask those questions. That cuts down because then you prioritize, you could say, my top two or three goals for this department are A and B. And then we get together and we look at those top goals that everyone has established that trustee would say, hey, I've done a little bit of research. I talked to the department head myself, and here's what they told me about this goal. These are the ones that I really think are top priorities. I think that cuts down on the retreat itself. I think so. I think I can actually do it in like three hours. But that has to also occur. And I'll make that as flexible as I can when I'm working with you, you know, if if you're one that has a day job, we can talk to the department head about, you know, can we do this at six o'clock, seven o'clock? Can it be a Zoom call? So but I think we can cut down on the time that we get together and we discuss overall goals if if each of you has a real solid knowledge of the department goals that I assign. And in that way, I also hope that it allows the department heads to interface directly with you, but with me there, of course, so that you have this direct feedback from them. And I think that it would be really interesting to do it in this fashion. That's the way I would like to. I would kind of run that past Libby, but I've not gotten around to sending you an email on it because I can't seem to tag down, tie down a date that works for us. So but May thirtieth is is looking like the most promising. There is between five and seven, there's one trustee that's not available. And then between seven and eight, there's a second one that's not available for that last hour. So I just need to find out from them if they can make it work. So that's kind of where I'm at. And if if I can't make that work, is it your recommendation that I just give you more dates and times or I know we're getting into busy time?
I believe it works first.
Yeah. What's that?
I've always see if it works first and then go forward about other times.
Yeah.
Sorry?
I think we shall be together. We're going to lose.
I know. I would agree. I think it's a richer dialogue if we do that. It's possible.
I don't want anyone to feel left out of this. This is a very important meeting.
And this would be separate from like, sorry, I just some folks on this because I like the visual, but of the tour of like the police department and possibly water treatment and all that other stuff, right?
So yeah, as part of the the goals retreat, I had hoped that we could do a quick tour of the new PB facility just to give you guys a vision of something that you've been working on, goals for many, many years come to fruition. I just think that's very inspiring to start a discussion on goals. And I will still do that to the best of my ability. It's a little more challenging if we're relegated to three hours, but let me see what, you know, let me have the discussions with the two that I need to have discussions with, but I haven't had a chance to do that yet. So.
Thanks for the update.
Absolutely. Thanks for asking.
Gina?
I've been kind of busy with a meeting, so I've been attending a lot of a sustainable development plan meetings, the county. Onto the recreation focus, their social social system focus, and also their agriculture and working lands focus group, which is actually quite interesting. And for our next water conversation, one thing I so as other stakeholders, though they're not necessarily quite in town, affects a lot of those folks. And in this conversation, they brought up kind of Unavista and some of the things we're doing as their painting water augmentation shirts. And so while I was on this call, I was dealing with these on from town. And, you know, I asked them if they'd be willing to come in and and share a little bit with us, a public comment. But I think the next work session we have might be prudent to make sure they're included as moving water around also if it affects them and their ditches in the irrigation. I don't, that's, I'm don't know everything about that world, but it seems the large amount of people that were at that meeting seemed quite interested, at least being station. And I also, I bring it up in staff person interaction here. Um, but those sustainability development plan, obviously, is for the entire county, but it affects each town jurisdiction. It's quite interesting what they're putting together. And so the last one was the recreation focus groups. Now they're finished with that. So then they'll work on kind of what they say, synthesizing all this information and then handing it out to each jurisdiction, finding ways that we can work together and things that are helpful across the board. At our trails advisory board meeting. And actually, Mark attended this last one, and I think it was Mark that helped bring in the Colorado Trail Foundation folks, which gave a great presentation on kind of what they're doing and and how maybe they could get more involved in town. And it kind of almost tied into some potential events. And we're like, you got to talk to Leslie. But but it was quite interesting. So things are kind of up and up there. Everybody seems to be excited. And lastly, chamber coffee. That went well. There was a lot of great input as usual. One person did make a mention at the very end of the coffee event, just kind of actually tied to some version of, well, the economy here and how we can do more to drum up. It's like more of a vibe and vibrancy during the winter months and what we could do both as, you know, town-directed or chamber-directed or with more events. But how can we help kind of get things rolling more over the winter months? Because that's slower season and obviously with the businesses, that's the hardest time for them. So instead of them having to close down, if we could come up with potential ways to do exciting things over that timeframe could help obviously all the community members as a whole. Hopefully, maybe that could provide more full-time year, I'm sorry, year-round job positions for folks, which then could also maybe help with housing as well. But um, but it was quite interesting. And so, you know, I'm just paying attention to that and try to brainstorm if there are opportunities in the, you know, November, January timeframe, you know, if there's things that come up, maybe just to be mindful of it and see maybe we can work towards that. But that's all I have.
Gina, what was the water group that?
Oh, um, so that was the focus group was the agriculture and it was originally called Open Space, but they changed the working lands. So agricultural working lands group. And I can give you the, well, Claire, you probably have Claire's, the group Lotus, I think, is the contracted service that's kind of putting all together. If you reach out to Claire, she can probably give you the email addresses of the essentially the farm and ranch group, I think that was invited as the stakeholders for that. But I think they'd love the opportunity to just have a conversation. So.
Maybe could you send me that?
Yes, I can totally. Yes, happy to.
I've had a couple of contacts from Andrea Carlstrom, who is the director of the health department. And one of them deals with a movie that's going to be this Wednesday at Stardust Stardust Theater on three oh six about ticks and all the illnesses that they carry. So it should be fascinating. And I think it's at six o'clock or so. And then the other thing is that we have gotten some opioid settlement funds. And you know, a lot of people got addicted to to opioid drugs and and then the big drug companies and and marketers have put money into settlement funds that have been distributed out to the state and to the regions and to the counties. So there's this amount of money at the county level. And Andrea is seeking a representative from Unavista to, you know, to serve on a group that will help with you know, trying to decide what is the best way to use these funds. So if anyone here would find that interesting, it'd be great if we could give her I can forward an email to you about it. Seems like it'd be right up Devon's alley.
Keep looking at me. It's not a super intensive thing.
I don't think it is. I'll find her email. Cool. Then I went to a program the other day called Listen Longer from the Family and Youth Initiatives. And it has to do with these chairs that they've set up to facilitate conversations between, particularly between teenagers and trusted adults. Because sometimes kids don't want to talk to their parents about some of the stuff that is happening in their lives. And if we can help them, you know, be mentally healthy by talking things through, it'd be pretty cool. And and these chairs sit next to each other so that the people are facing each other, but not directly, you know, not not just. So go sit in one of those chairs and see if anybody comes along.
Starts talking to you, you just want to relax.
Or you start.
Relax, don't sit.
Good. I just want to congratulate Leslie and everybody else involved with keeping uni buena is an awesome turnout and everything moves smoothly and Allison gave me the appropriate amount of crap for not show signing up in time. So I had to get a shirt later. There's a, there's a good program. I just saw a lot of people out. Again, since we're here, we still see a ton of folks show up. It's great going to events where there's a ton of turnout. So this went really well. We did the, I joined the team that kind of cleaned up all the fire pits up there for a mile and it's interesting, we got, went up there and there were people were parked all the way down the road in the parking lot. I mean, it was just packed and it's just like the season's changing quite a bit. That's great. I also wanted to flag, I don't know if anyone else knows it, but coming back from fading wise, just wanted to highlight, you know, zoning changes and everything else, the impacts I saw to sign up for, I think, new storage unit or something like that, but in the area that we're rezoned, it wasn't up there. I think it just was, but seeing quick media change for that change is interesting to see.
Yeah. I'm processing. Maybe I'll talk next week.
Okay. Thank you. Lisa?
I was just going to cover goals retreat.
Okay. Okay.
Y'all know about the planning director interviews this Friday morning. So hopefully that will have, you know, a good outcome. And I think that I hope that the methodology I've put together will bring us a strong candidate.
Right. Grace? John?
Augmentation certificates are a little bit like the James Webb telescope, like you don't really know what's but you know, you know, I know we all kind of feel the same way. I mean, right? Because we're still kind of like, you know, we we feel pretty positive, right? We've had, we've had some good discussions recently with that. And so it's going to be interesting. I think I think one of the things that I like to do best with staff is maybe trying to find a, you know, you know, as we move forward, if we do, you know, work with augmentation certificates in town, looking for like a proportionate kind of balance. And maybe we could kind of provide some direction and some thoughtful perspective from from what, you know, we we do and like the or or maybe not, you know, and on, you know, a lot of what, a lot of what I rely on is is feedback from the water advisory board. And so we have had some pretty good feedback from them on a lot of different things. Of course, if you're COVAL and red water and Jeff, you know, so I mean, it's, you know, the people that really help help me kind of understand things. It'd be great to diversify from it. It seems like it might be a really cool initiative if you do that proportionally. I don't know. I do think that sometimes. I, I do think that sometimes along that line, I sometimes feel like maybe we're, we're reacting a lot. My department reacts a lot instead of being able to plan a lot and I, there's a lot of different areas where I see that right now, kind of reacting to some trip hazard sidewalks and places where I'm concerned, you know? And so kind of refocusing a little bit of our planning to identify some of these areas where it's, you know, where we're vulnerable, our streets too, but really right now, I'm kind of looking at like our parks. I think long-term planning, I think strategic planning, like building a stakeholder group, whether it's through advisory boards and staff and our community, I think these days are coming, like our, our infrastructure in our parks is, is pretty age, irrigation systems are pretty old or our water use is high for, you know, the amount of water that we serve, just feel like there's sometimes a a good opportunity to maybe pause and, and take a step back and look at things a little bit closer, whether it's, you know, some opportunities at River Park, McPhelony, which is like that, we have a new stage, we have water irrigation that goddamned shit the process. Looking at it, you know, you know, looking at it with a lot of friends, I get it, wish we had a whole different design in here that was more thoughtful to the uses that we have in here and help us with, you know, some of our problems with our high water use in summer. Trying, so. Anyways, I'll probably have to have another staff report this month because I got a few things to cover and I didn't really get a lot. I got a lot of bullet points in, so I apologize for that. Have some discussions, a couple of other things, whether, I'll talk to Paula and we still bought it.
Oh, let's see, CML Spring Outreach Meeting, SLIDA, Tuesday, 10 o'clock. Do I need to register anybody who's going? I got you on the list, I got Sue on the list. Anybody else going to be able to attend or are we going to pass?
Private joke.
I did want to just ask, and maybe just bring up to, yeah, get a little bit more key directions. So the Carmen Street Work Session, super helpful for me. Not necessarily in hearing like strong new direction, but, but more in, in a lack of like major red flags. I really appreciated all your questions. One of the things that I am looking for a little bit more key direction on is the concept of town providing cash to make up a difference in the cost of the childcare center. And so really what I just would put to you, maybe in a more direct question, is it okay with you if I continue to work with Philip and Jeff, Lisa, to figure out how we could structure a cash contribution to the project that would cover the difference between the $800,000 number and whatever the childcare corn shells can cost up to $400,000?
When does that ARPA money have to be spent?
Prefer Philip on that.
End of 2024.
Okay.
Philip's still here, he's awake.
So thanks, Bill. A couple, a couple of possibilities, one that we do it as needed, the other that we signal it's up to 400,000, are you recommending?
I personally would, would think it'd be more prudent for town to say, we will cover the difference up to 400,000 and we, we, you know, staff works on creating a framework for how we would do that. Putting, putting an arbitrary number out there, in my opinion, especially if you want to, we have such conceptual designs, may end up shooting ourselves in the foot. Either we're spending more money than we need to or we're not, we're sort of cutting the childcare short.
Short.
So I think if, if, if you all are willing, I would prefer to structure it as a reimbursement towards the end of the completion of phase one, where we can see the costs and we know we're not on up for more than 400,000. But you all might be willing to chip in up to that.
He only asked for the 250, why would we give them an extra?
Well, the, the 250 was illustrative, based on around $230 a square foot. The indications from our architect is that it would be anywhere from 225 to 250. So it could be a slightly less than 250, it could be slightly more than 250. And that would be the, the reason for my recommendation. Obviously, if you all would feel more comfortable with a straight number, fair enough, we can work out how that, how that can work as well.
Then just to ask Philip, do you have any thoughts or preferences on that, just either logistically or otherwise?
No, we're, we're pretty flexible with it, the money's sitting, sitting, it's set aside, excuse me. So there's no, I guess there's no pressure to, to use it or specify. We, we've got time, so, so I think from the finance side, we're very flexible with it. I get from Joseph's side, having the, the direction I, is desirable, but yeah, I think we're, we're good on the finance side, whether you want to hold on to it, allocate a portion or all of it.
I think sounds good. Yeah, I think having the flexibility so that you don't have to come back if it is at 275. Yeah, for an additional 25 or whatever, like I think, as long as, you know, we have the proper accounting and know why it's going over and have safeguards there, then you should have that flexibility.
I'm not seeing any vigorous head shaking.
Dan, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring attention to a couple of things. In 1962, President Kennedy designated May 15th as Police Memorial Day, on the week of as Police Memorial Week. So in Washington DC, they'll be adding this year 224 names to the Police Memorial Wall for officers killed in the line of duty last year. So I just want to bring awareness to that and also Mother's Day, don't forget your moms. Thanks to all the moms out there.
Can never forget my mom. Thank you. Leslie? Okay. So I would like to have a motion from somebody to go into executive session. And topic of the executive session will be to hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions. Pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute, Section 24-6-402-4B concerning potential master plan updates and processing land use applications. This will be the first of two executive sessions. Would someone like to make that motion?
Mayor Fay, I believe that we normally brief both executive sessions and we just do one motion to go into both.
Okay. The second executive session will be to hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions. Pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute, Section 24-6-402-4B concerning service concerns with the United States Postal Service. Our motion to go into the two executive sessions.
I still move second.
We have Cobb and LaCruzzi. And all in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Okay, we will go into executive session, but let's take a five-minute break.